I'm going to call this meeting to order. Calling the meeting of the Amherst School Committee to order at 6:03 PM. Welcome, everybody. Mr. Nakajima will not be here tonight. Okay, let's start by approving the minutes of December 19th, 2017. Oh, yes, Dr. Morris.
So, I'm sorry, I may have missed it. Did you announce that the meeting is being recorded?
Oh, I apologize. Yes, this is, this meeting is being recorded and live broadcast by Amherst Media. So, let's turn to the minutes, please. And I have one edit, which is that it says, let's see, where it speaks, where it talks about the BCG, it says that Ms. Hazard and Mr. Demling will not be serving, oh, sorry, it's the bottom of number two. I, Ms. Ha, I will be serving, it's just Mr. Demling will not be serving.
I move to approve the minutes of, what date is this?
December 19th?
December 19th, 2017.
Second.
Do I have any discussion, any further discussion?
Just one further clarification on that paragraph that you noted before for correction. The last sentence in that paragraph says, "Instead, Mr. Nakajima and Ms. Marriott will attend as the Regional Chair and Vice Chair." So, we may want to change that also, maybe just have strike your word instead.
Mm-hmm.
Does this change the meaning?
Yep. Yep. Is that fine?
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. All those in favor? Great, thank you, it's unanimous. Okay, announcements and public comment. Let's start with public comment. Anyone here like to make any public comment? Okay. Announcements, do we have any announcements from the school committee members? Dr. Morris, Mr. Ham. Okay. Superintendent update?
Sure. So, I have a couple of things, and one, it's a little bit of dialogue, I think, actually. So, I'm not going to repeat some of the things that I said last night. So, the two ones that are specific to Amherst is that, as you know, on Sunday, Senator Markey is coming to Amherst to do a town hall. Prior to that town hall, he's meeting with Lucio Perez, who's been provided sanctuary at the first, first church in Amherst. I was invited to attend a meeting with the senator and some folks interested in talking about immigration, it's not a public meeting. Hence, why not everyone's invited from the committee, or I'm not able to, because I inquired about that. However, I did ask that one member of the committee, if someone is able and interested to join that conversation, Mr. Perez will be in that conversation as well. So, it's at 3:00 on Sunday, and I didn't know if there was a school committee member who was interested in participating.
Thank you. So, Dr. Morris and I did speak about this at a time. I'm not able to attend, and I wouldn't necessarily attend anyway, but I'm not able to, so I'm wondering if there's anybody who would be interested in attending the meeting with Senator Markey and Mr. Perez.
One of the organizers reached out to me separately, so I'll be attending, but...
In a different costume?
Yeah.
So, I don't know. Mr. Ham, is there any interest?
I'm happy to attend.
You'd be happy to attend? Okay, that would be great.
It's at 3:00?
Yeah.
3:00? Great. And at 4:00, there's a concert at the JCA to benefit Mr. Perez as well, which I have relatives singing in, so I'm going to be attending that. My kids. Yeah.
The other update, I was, actually, two other ones I was going to give. One is on here, which is that we filmed last week, Mr. Shea is here, Ms. Chamberlain will be here shortly, she's having to vent at Fort River right now. Next focus window into ARPS, so it'll probably be about two weeks is our lag time from when it gets filmed to when it's get edited and online, but I think it's an engaging piece, really getting deep into what it means to be an elementary school principal in an elementary school, it's 180 days a year, so.
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Shea, for participating in that. And the last one, which I think we spoke about a regional meeting, when I had, like, photocopied handouts, but Sonya Nieto's book, which Dr. Boddy's also involved with, Affirming Diversity, which is socio-political context of multicultural education. So, this is incredibly widely-used textbooks and multicultural education courses in higher education. So, there is a section that talks about both the district, you know, staff, as well as school committees' response to some of the events in the last year, as it relates to undocumented folks, both locally, and then some statements that were made beyond. So, I have a little sticky note. So, at some point, you know, I don't want to distract from the meeting, but if people want to take a look at it, or afterwards, if they want to borrow a copy, it's kind of neat to be in a book that literally thousands of folks who are training to be teachers and administrators and educators across the country will be involved in. So, I just wanted to share that as well.
And this was just recently published?
Yes, this is the first one.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay. Okay. So, moving on to new and continuing business. So, the first thing we're going to start with, we have members from two subgroups of the Enrollment Working Group. Thank you all so much for being here, for all the work that you've done, and we're really looking forward to hearing from your presentations, and we appreciate getting them ahead of time, so we were able to review all the work that you've been doing. So, we're going to begin with the declining enrollment group.
And so, if I could, Ms. Hazard?
Yes.
So, just to bring some people who have been connected, or perhaps less so, so last spring, the school committee voted to allow me to create an enrollment working group. The group met multiple times over the last summer, and then throughout the fall, and then really it became more individual subgroups working throughout the late fall and early winter to put together these presentations. The subgroups' categories themselves were defined by the actual Enrollment Working Group. So, the two presentations we have, Declining Enrollment, will be the first one, specialized there, I know, we may, hopefully, the timing works out, we may have to adjust a little bit, because I know someone's coming from about Fort River. To present, and much like Ms. Hazard said, I want to thank you for presenting that information and sending it to myself and the school committee ahead of time. And before we get into the presentation, I'd love it if actually everyone could be introduced from that working group, and then dig right in.
So, a part of the, well, the committee consisted of Andrew, Jeff, John, Tracy, and me. And we're excited to begin.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity. Let the record reflect that any penetrating insights are mine. Any errors are Dr. Morris's.
So, just for people to know, you do need to speak in the microphone in order for it to be broadcast, because otherwise, Amherst Media won't hear you.
It's a trick.
It's not a trick. So, you're welcome to stand. That's fine.
Okay.
I mean, if you wanted to pull up, yeah, if you're comfortable, that would be great.
Is this okay, then? So, let's start. I know we don't have a ton of time, so let me jump in. Essentially, we're going to talk about, you know, some of the big, what we think are critical findings as to some of the particulars of declining enrollment, and then talk about why, some ideas about why those, that might be, and then some recommendations. So, it's pretty straightforward. So, let's start with what does declining enrollment look like? Notice, you are, so here we have a comparison of the pre-CADA 6th grade student population over the last 22 or 3 years, both in Amherst and the public pre-CADA 12th grade population across the entire state. The basic point here is, whereas we see significant decline in the Amherst Elementary School District, we don't see that decline statewide, all right? So, we can't pin the blame on huge structural factors operating at least at the state level. Key takeaway, number one, the decline that we see in Amherst overwhelmingly among white students. So, there was a decline of 700 across Amherst over the last 22 years in the previous slide. That almost exactly mirrors the decline in white students, specifically in Amherst, right? So, in 1994 fiscal year, we had 1,200 white students, and by this past year, we had 525 white students in the Amherst Elementary Schools. By comparison, you can see the lines below are all the various students of color. You'll see a blip around fiscal year 2006, where we started counting the multiracial non-Hispanic population. So, a fair interpretation of what happened there is that African-American, some students who had previously been counted as African-American, right, now started being identified as multiracial. I think that's likely, we don't know for sure, but it's very likely. So, that African-American line declined, just where this multiracial identity line picks up. Otherwise, the basic takeaway here is that, in most cases, certainly Hispanic students has gone up a bit, but mostly, these lines are pretty flat, right? So, the number of students of color has stayed flat, while the number of white students has gone down dramatically, which of course leads to dramatic increase in the share of students of color. Number two, that enrollment declines are confined to Fort River and Wildwood. That's an interesting thing. So, here, 2010-11 Mark Meadow closes, you have redistricting, and you see the sharp increase, right, as students are redistributed. This blue line is Wildwood, so you see a sharp increase in the number of students, personal being direct response to that. But then, the decline that we've seen in Wildwood picks up again, right, once that adjustment is made. Ditto with Fort River, actually, not much of an pickup in Fort River, as a result of the students from Wildwood being, or sort of from Mark Meadow, being redistributed or redistricting. But Crocker Farm, over the last 10 years or so, has generally actually increased, right? So, almost the entire decline then is confined to Fort River and Wildwood, which is obviously something to be explained. And then, we wanted to look as well at, you know, other, or student populations defined in other ways, with respect to disability, first language not English, English language learner, and low income. The main thing here is that, probably not surprisingly, as the share of Hispanic and Asian-American students increases, as a share of the entire student population, the share as well of first language not English and English language learner percentage also increases. But remember, for the most part, these are not huge absolute increases, right? These are increases of share of the overall population, but that might have implications for curriculum and resource allocation. And then, I turn it over to my colleague, John, to talk about why this might be.
I will do the clicking, because I can clear. Yeah, I'll just a couple of slides on what could be causing this. First, Amherst has fewer college, school age children than we once did. Number of children under the age of 18 has declined from 4,500 to 3,400, 1,100 students in the last 15 years. There are at least two causes that we found that could explain this. Larger numbers of folks in town are aging in place. Amherst is becoming, I guess has always been known, is now becoming known as a nice place to retire, so folks are staying in their homes. We also have a significant growth in our college age population. Between 1997 and 2015, UMass enrollment increased by 4,400 students, that's about 17.5%. And these trends just mentioned seem to have caused a situation where Amherst now has less family-friendly, friendly housing than we once did. And we may not have even noticed this happening as it happened. There is not enough housing for UMass students on campus. A 2015 study that was, I think, commissioned by the town from RKG Consultants, found that there was something like 4,000 to 4,500 students living off-campus, and this has been a key distortion of the housing market. UMass's capacity to house its students is only at about 60%. The other 40% spill into the town and surrounding towns. RKG associated the rise of student rent, of the rise of this sort of student rental market economy with enrollment increases at UMass, but also smaller enrollment increases at Hampshire and Amherst College. The rise of this sort of rental market leads to a situation where former family housing that might have been starter homes is converted into rental housing for students, the same with apartments. It drives rents up, it drives housing prices up, and it may, that also, just higher prices leads to higher taxes. It just makes it tougher for folks to come to town to start a life and a family, and that seems to be a key driver of why we're losing, why so many students are not here anymore, let's put it that way.
Okay. So, my name is Tracy, and I'm going to be talking about the charter schools. And I will say that I have a child both at Crocker Farm and a child at the Chinese immersion charter school. So, you know, one of the factors here with the Amherst schools, as has been a subject at many of the school committee meetings, is that there's now more robust competition from charter schools. If you look at the trends here, the blue bars are the total charter school enrollment for Amherst, as reported to the states. So, the year before the Chinese school opened, there was one student who was attending a charter school, Hilltown Charter, and then after that, the enrollment has increased. I mean, it is leveling off from Amherst. And so, currently, at the Chinese school, there's about 320 students. I believe it went up a little bit this year. And about 20 to 25% of those students come from Amherst. So, the Amherst enrollment of the Chinese school is now close to 90. You know, in terms of which students are attending the charter school, I found some interesting statistics, including, so in the first year at the charter school, it started with two classes, there was a kindergarten class and a first-grade class, and then they added a 6th grade in 2010 and 9th grade in 2013. And so, mainly, students enter at either kindergarten, or they enter in 6th grade in terms of the language immersion. Students who are Mandarin speakers can enter in the in-between years, but those are the main humps. So, in Amherst, that's the same trend, where students usually enter in kindergarten first grade, or they enter in 6th grade. So, last year, I know that 12 Amherst students who would have been Amherst students and the Amherst Elementary Schools went to the charter school. And then, a couple of other interesting trends were just that, that in terms of female students, so the year that the charter school opened, and this is in the longer version, so we had the longer version of our presentation, and we realized that, like, 35 slides was too much to talk about 10 minutes. So, we cut it down. We didn't try to go really fast. But there were some interesting statistics there, like, for example, in the first year that the charter school was open, 2/3 of the students were girls, which I thought was pretty interesting, and they continue to have a higher percentage of girls, about 54% compared to the overall Amherst and state population of 48%. And also, the Asian, I mean, there's a large Asian population there, but again, that's declined as well. So, the first year, it was 1/3 of the students, now it's about 18% of students, and the school is becoming more diverse over time, particularly in the upper grades, it's pulling in more students from Springfield and Holyoke. In terms of, so there was a survey...
Tracy, just to give, just to fill out that chart, because you may not have the statistic. Can you scroll back one slide?
Oh.
And that very much, this doesn't count against your attendance.
Oh, and the full, were you going to talk about the full? Oh, okay, go ahead.
I was actually just going to say the FY18 numbers, which we now have, have it at 84.
Okay.
So, we saw a slight decline from last year to this year in terms of the Amherst Elementary School enrollment at that charter school. Sorry to interrupt you. I figured...
But I think the middle school and high school went up.
They both actually went down. But I just wanted to, just, someone might be wondering, since it ended FY18...
What happened, right? Yeah. And so, in terms of why some students are choosing the Chinese school, there was a survey that was done, I know it was presented at the school committee meeting earlier. And so, there are about 90 not, as I said, there's about 90 students at the charter school from Amherst, 34 of them filled out the, 34 families, and many of the families have multiple students there, filled out this survey. So, what we did is, we looked at the results of the survey, and we combined, because families could offer, answer either major factor, or somewhat a factor, minor factor, not a factor. So, when we looked at it, we combined both major and somewhat, because those are both kind of in the positive direction. So, 94% of the families said that the school, we chose, offers classes curriculum that's uniquely suited for our child, and people were asked to expand on that. A lot of the families mentioned language immersion. And people were not necessarily committed to Chinese language immersion, just language immersion in general and those opportunities, but there were also families that mentioned other things, including just more advanced curriculum and so on. So, then, speaking to that, the next one, the school we chose seemed to have more students learning on a higher level, 85% of families said that, major somewhat. And then, they also said that it was less about the local public school, like, less about their concerns about Amherst, but just more hearing about good things about the Chinese school. So, that was 88% of families. You know, in terms of factors that didn't seem to be influenced the people who filled out the survey, you know, we were concerned about physical infrastructure of the Amherst schools. Only about a quarter of the families said that that was a major or somewhat factor for them. And in terms of MCAS scores, right? So, the Chinese school talks about how they're a title Level 1 school, and that they have high MCAS. But again, that wasn't really a factor for that many families. So, in terms of why some Chinese school, Chinese school students come back to the Amherst schools, you know, families were asked if they expected their child would return to the Amherst schools. About 53% of the respondents said that it was likely, very likely, or somewhat likely, that they would send their children back. In terms of reasons that families want to come back to the Amherst schools, you know, there, one of the things is like free busing, there's more extracurriculars, more sports, more class options, there's, you know, the support for populations with special needs. There's only four staff at the Chinese school that deal with special needs populations. I mean, so overall, for the Chinese school, the main attrition, and this isn't just Amherst families, it occurs before middle school, so it's either after 5th grade, and the middle school there starts at 6th grade, or for Amherst families, some families will leave after 6th grade, and to go to the Amherst Middle School, you know, after 8th grade before high school. And then, the Chinese school offers an IB program, and again, that doesn't always draw that many students. So, we look here, too, just as comparison, you know, in terms of what's happening with the charter schools compared to the private schools and students choice and out. These numbers are both pretty flat. I mean, the choice and out students have gone down slightly. In terms of the private school enrollment, I think, even though the numbers are the same, I think it's interesting just because as the enrollment in Amherst, the Amherst public schools is declining, it means that the private school enrollment is actually a higher percentage, if you will. So, the main trends that we're seeing here, you know, is that Amherst has fewer school-age children than we once did, Amherst has less family-friendly housing than we once did, and Amherst has more robust competition from charter schools. You know, we saw in the information that Andrew presented, that that seems like it's mainly affecting white families more than other families. But again, there's, these are all complex things. You know, there's a lot of data that we don't have yet, so, thanks.
So, excuse me, what do we suggest that you do about declining enrollment? For starters, there are a number of things that we just couldn't get to the bottom of. We collected the data, but couldn't really explain it. Why are white students seeming to be affected more than students of color? That's something we'd like to understand better. Why are Fort River and Wildwood affected differently than Crocker Farm? And what are the trends in different neighborhoods in, throughout Amherst? We didn't really get that granular in our studies, so that's something to look at further. Another recommendation is that we fully recognize the challenges and problems that declining enrollment causes. Declining enrollment is not felt evenly throughout the schools, that's one problem, managing that. As student enrollment goes down, the costs to support the schools doesn't necessarily go down. So, that affects the per pupil spending, which affects our charter school tuitions and so forth, so it's something to be aware of. As we lose parents of students, there's a risk that we'll lose engagement throughout the community and the school system, so we're concerned about that. And there's the perception that people are fleeing from the schools, and that could possibly cause negative connotations and lead to the temptation to choose alternatives. Constructively, something, one thing we could do is alter our curriculum to address some of the things that we've seen are causing people to enroll in alternative educational choices, particularly the charter schools. There was a lot of great information in the charter school, private school, parent survey, and we attempted to do a thematic coding of the reasons that people sent their children to those schools. That didn't make the abridged presentation, but it's in the expanded one, if you want to check it out. But as you might expect, the Chinese immersion school language is the, is the key reason that parents have identified that they're sending their children there. So, you might consider beefing up the language programs at the elementary school. The other recurring theme is academic rigor. If there's some way we could address above-grade learners in the elementary school, that could prove to draw people. Other changes you might consider are expanding our preschool program, which is always at capacity, I understand, and I was surprised to see how many parents mentioned the need for physical education among their children. So, that's something to keep in mind. And now, I will turn it over to Doreen.
So, as we look at the three common themes that we're finding, first, fewer school-age children, then we talked about the housing situation, and we talked about having robust competition. So, one of the additional, or additional recommendation that we have is to market the strengths that we have here in Amherst. And the diversity is one of the things that we have as a strength. The charter schools and the private schools don't seem to have as much diversity as we have, so to let families know, if you're looking for this, we have it. And how do we let families know that is another way that we, we all said, we'll have the committee consider, you know, some of the options that are out there to market and let families know what we have to offer. And also, we talked about how we needed family-friendly housing. So, one of the things that we talk about, or we put there on the table, is something that we should look further into, is having a seat at one of these meetings that take place in the town. So, whether it's the Amherst Community Housing Forum, or the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, just having a school committee member, or some of the staff, just sit on these panels and offer our voice in these discussions that are taking place would be helpful. The other thing that we said would be very important for Amherst to do is prepare a contingency plan. We know that there are certain things that we can't affect, like the birth rate. We know that we can't affect the prices, the cost of living here in Amherst. But what are we going to do to, to just have a voice in that? We're saying, let's look further at what the research says, and let's look further as to what we can do to make changes here. And so, also, we talked about having the public educated as to what the effects will really be if our enrollment continued to decline, so that they can come out and maybe advocate for certain things, too. So, with that, we just want to acknowledge that we received a lot of information and guidance from Dr. Morris, Dr. Kristen Rodriguez, Molly Goran Watts, John Horneck, Nate Malloy, and the one that's missing from here that's also important to recognize is Sean Mangano. He did a lot of work with us to help us to get to where we got to with this presentation. And our group want to thank everyone for their attention and, you know, for hearing what we had to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, really, thank you all so much. This is the second of five reports, and again, very impressive presentation and level of detail and thought and work that went into preparing this. So, now, we're going to open it up to school committee members for, you know, reflections, questions, comments, sort of discussion about where we, what we'd like to know further to help us consider this as we go forward. Yeah?
So, first of all, thank you very much. This is, uh, this is really enlightening to have this number of differently-focused groups coming together. So, trying to pull this all together into action items towards the end is going to be a challenge, but it's great to be in the middle of this. I guess one of my first questions is, you know, to anybody on the group, what most surprised you, having not done this kind of deep dive yourself before about the causes of declining enrollment? And the reason I ask is that I find this one of the more difficult things to explain to the general public, because the sort of knee-jerk reactions seem to be, well, it's all charter schools, or it's, or you're not doing enough right in the, in the schools. And, you know, there's always things we could be doing better in the schools, and, and we certainly have an issue with charter school expense. But to describe it as a multi-variable problem, I find very challenging in a short amount of time, often in a public discussion. So, I guess, in terms of that communication, the things we found most surprising to individual experience?
Just step up to the microphone. Yeah.
One thing that was surprising for me was just how much of an effect the university has on the town, you know? We learned that... We learn the university community now is, outnumbers the non-university community. So when Boston decides to expand enrollment there, it has major effects on the town, both positive and challenges. So that was a big one for me.
So, this may be an obvious point, but the sharpness of the decline in white students, right, certainly was a, obviously a major finding, and the surprise, how sharp it was, and over how much time, right? So that's a long, steady, sharp decline. And I say that in part to raise, you know, a ticklish issue, right? So the question is, why is that? As we've said, I mean, I think there's a really credible story about, right, Amherst, let's say 20 years ago, being much more white than it is now. And as, you know, some families who are owning, white homeowners, sell their homes, they leave, and disproportionately, those become rental properties to, for students, right, as something that John mentioned, which is to say that they're not replaced by other families with children. And then other families disproportionately white stay, but their children, of course, grow and, and leave the schools, and they aren't, right, those aren't families that are replacing the students who have left. So clearly, that's a significant part of it. We look at charter schools, at private schools, clearly, there are, you know, sort of legitimate, compelling reasons for people to send their students there, why did otherwise? The ticklish part is this term, white flight, right, which has come up, which is true, which has been true in many places in, across the country. So it's this idea that part of the reason we see the decline in white students in many places, especially urban districts, is because some white parents associate, right, a larger share of students of color with a decline in the quality of education available in the school, right? So certainly, in Amherst, this is not something where we like to think of ourselves as being, and again, the, the reasons for this are rich and varied, and it's impossible certainly for us to disentangle them all. But it has a really practical consequence, potentially, right? So when we talk about diversity, for example, right, diversity and marketing diversity, the trickiness is, for some people, diversity is a plus, right? I mean, racial economic diversity is a plus, they might be attracted to that in a school. We know from national surveys that diversity actually ranks fairly low, right, on the list of reasons that parents are attracted to schools. So most people say, all things equal, I'd like more diverse schools, but things are never equal, and that's actually rarely the reason they make the choice. The trickiness is this, if insofar as some of what we're seeing are parents, and especially some white families who are leaving the schools because they are becoming more diverse, then your marketing challenge becomes tricky, right? So marketing diversity works for some and may not work for some. So what do you do with that? So again, this is speculation, what is speculation based on a lot of history and a lot of national data and opinion survey. So unless Amherst is completely different from many, many other places, it's at least worth considering.
Thank you.
I'm just about to follow up on that. Andrew and I have talked a lot about what he just spoke about, and I was largely taken with that, the role that the university plays in the sort of changing dynamic in the housing market. And so for you guys, I was also taken by the fact that the, that the schools have never, our public schools have not been actively marketing themselves. So market, market, market. I'm a university guy from the City University of New York that was going through a long period of taking a drubbing in the press, losing students hand over fist. We engaged in some important marketing ventures, in part, we created an honors college. We put on 50,000 students in about seven or eight years, just by changing public perception. So that's one thing, whatever you have to do to change public perception, that would be wonderful. At the, and I'm a glass half-full guy, so I, I know we can do lots of things to make ourselves more attractive, but there's this, this thing happening on, on the outskirts of town that we have to also figure out. We've got to get the university engaged in a conversation about the relationship between what their choices are, or the way their choices affect the housing market. And I know that, that they can be engaged in a constructive way. The RKG consultants suggested that this town, in order to put some slack in the housing market, should consider creating between 150 and 200 affordable units year over year for a while, until we get some more slack. That's a lot of units, and this town, that would be a huge challenge. So there are lots of things that are gonna be very hard for the schools to deal with, but if we can engage the town positively, I think we all want to see this town succeed and not have it, you know, get hit by a bunch of trends that are, maybe we weren't watching them as they were happening, but they've caught up with us now.
Thank you. Anyone else from that group? Okay, thank you. Yes.
I just wanted to also say thank you to the group for putting all this time and effort in developing this presentation. Really appreciate the depth and expertise that came into this. And I also want to thank you for your courage in presenting difficult topics in the way that you have, and very frank, and honest way, and I really appreciate that. I, I do also agree, I think that the idea presented about having a school committee member sitting on either the Amherst Community Housing Forum or any of the other groups is a great idea. And I think, you know, our small committee is taxed at this point in filling all these different roles, right, around town, both, you know, our subcommittees internally and the regional committee and all of that. But I do think this is an important place for us to be, for all the reasons that have been stated. And so I'm hopeful that we can actually pursue that as a, as an option at some point in the near future, because I do see some of the, the housing trends that have been emerging around town, and I think having that perspective from the school districts is incredibly important to ensure that we are thinking about how our families are both enjoying the housing here in the community and also being able to, you know, contribute to the fabric of the community. So anyway, thank you very much, I really appreciate this, and it's been a really important and valuable presentation.
Thank you. Comments? Okay. Thank you very much, and I feel like, you know, I'm starting to write questions about, you know, sort of housing trends, it makes you want to dig deeper, why, how, how this all fits together. I, this may, one question, just a very specific question that I don't know if you have the answer to, this, it's about sort of the housing, housing trends, do you, this piece about rental, you know, there's a lot of sort of, there's been a lot of statements about the number of rental units in the town, or housing turning into rental units, right? What was a family house turning into rental units? Are there any, is there any data on that specifically, like that rent, that what was once single-family homes have turned into rental units? Is that something that you're able to dig up, actually in terms of numbers? Can you cut this clip?
Person, actually, you know, you know well.
Mr. Horneck, yeah.
I want to thank you, Phoebe, for putting me in touch, and Jeff and I met with John Horneck jointly. John's been doing a lot of research on this. He's probably collected some of the best numbers. I'm assuming the town has numbers as well.
Yeah.
The trends are real, they're totally understandable, that if the university can't house its students, they have to stay somewhere. And so this has been the solution, but it's a solution that we now recognize is, is affecting our schools. So I'm sure that if they have not put that information together, somebody either, somehow, somebody has to get that information more clearly and start to think about what we do to, not necessarily reverse, but to, but reverse the trend in schools by whatever means turns, that turns out to be.
Wasn't there a 57% number of the trend?
There's a number, and I, I, I don't, I don't know where, I don't want to use it because I don't know where it came from, but it, we think we saw a number that it could even be that more than half of the privately owned units are now being rented out.
Are now being rented out? And that, you know, could we look at that now compared to however many years ago?
It's been going up. I mean, it's, it's an important part of, of the local economy. There are many, many people who, who do this, and this is not, this is not just in, in Amherst. Many places where large universities expand, this will happen because they have to put the students somewhere. My understanding is from Mr. Horneck that some university officials have pointed out that it's difficult to get dormitories to cover the full cost of, of the debt service to build them. You'll see that UMass is spending a lot of time building laboratory space and research facilities, because the overhead associated with research grants is far more lucrative and covers the cost. So it's, it's, they have a problem as well. If they want to build a lot of dormitories, they're gonna have to raise more, raise tuition. It's a squeeze all the way around. So I'm not blaming them, having been a university person, I understand how these things work, but I think people need to start having a serious dialogue, not with the schools, the town, and the university about what to do next.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
So I think that one issue with the housing and rental units is not just that there are more rental units, but also that they're targeted at students, and the price point is just not affordable to families. So typically, like individual students, you'll have a, you know, you can have up to four unrelated people living together, and so each student, there'll be one student per bedroom, sometimes there's more, even though that's not legal, but, so students will be each paying like $800, $900, $1,000, which means for a four-bedroom house, that's, right, that's too much money for families. So that's pushing families out. So, I mean, there are, there are quite a few housing projects on the horizon, and I know that when some of the developers come to the town, they say, well, these don't have to be student housing, they could be family housing. I know that happened on my own street, but then, if you look at the price point, that, you know, they're saying, well, you can be paying $3,500, $4,000 for this unit. I mean, families aren't gonna afford that, right? So it really is pricing it out of the range of families.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yep.
Just one other comment I want to add to kind of round out the discussion, because this is certainly a, an issue that I've tried to get a better understanding of over the years and talked to different people, like John Horneck was mentioned, he's a great resource in town. So there's other people in town, because this affects things other than the schools, right, who have, who have tried to understand this problem. So I think those would be some worthy resources to reach out to. I, I sort of got to a point where I, I saw that it was, it was a more multi-variable problem than I was able to understand at the time, and, because on the one hand, it seems simple, that you just increase the number of starter-family homes and you'll get a higher number of students. And I've, I've seen some pretty in-depth studies that show that's not always necessarily the case, towns that have greatly increased their housing stock at affordable price points and seen next-to-no increase in students, and so it's, it's multi-variable. So there's that relationship of, of housing to students that is not necessarily that, that simple. And there's also the school's relationship to UMass, you know, which I think is another multi-variable complex thing. I think, I think we're actually involved, the town is, and Dr. Morris can maybe speak about this a little bit, in exploring with UMass its impact to the schools, and I think about all the ways that UMass impacts the region, and, you know, they're our biggest driver of our local economy, and it's, that pumps a lot of money that then creates, that builds up the tax base, and there's a lot of moving parts that can't be described in a two-minute comment in the school committee. So I guess it's just, it's just sort of a way to say that, that, that these things are good to explore, and yet, yet sort of withhold conclusion judgment until we...
And of course, culture and amazing diversity and everything that...
To have education be the industry is...
Right, right, yes.
I'm wondering if we could look, I mean, the, the chart, I think Andrew, you pointed out that declining enrollment is not a statewide problem as, as it is, but I wonder if it's a regional, like Western Mass problem. So that could be, you know, revealing too, because I think Amherst is unique, and we are racially diverse, but in, in other communities in Western Mass, I think they're also seeing declining enrollment.
There, there was a slide that I think you included in our, that you sent to us, that showed that, and that Amherst was different.
So the abridged version of the presentation doesn't include a slide on regional trends, but, I mean, we had talked about that we knew that it was not just an Amherst trend in terms of education, that if we look at Hilltowns, you know, they're closing elementary schools and so on, and enrollments are not necessarily going up. So we did include a slide that I think has about like seven or eight other districts, and that they are all mainly showing declines. Not to the same extent of Amherst. Amherst is more, but, but it's all, it is a general trend, right? And particularly for the, some of the districts too, I think that it can mask the fact that, like, they're accepting so many choice-in students. So for example, with Palom, right, or Deerfield has choice-in and so on, so you'd have to look at it excluding some of the choice-in students as well.
Yes.
Just on that point, I think it's a great question that you asked. Last year, and actually both, just one and a cage, and Mr. Donas were at a meeting, and I had followed up with a gentleman who spoke from the Mass Policy and Budget and Policy Center, I think, he was one of the keynote speakers at the Conference on Poverty that we went to at Clark University. And he described the population change inside the 495 Belt and outside the 495 Belt as really feeling different, that inside the 495 Belt, there is an increase in, in overall population. He wasn't talking necessarily just about school age. And outside the 495 Belt, it's less, and then the further you get from 495 West, the more the decline happens. So if you're following, there's a lot of work that's happening in Berkshire County. There was a suggestion to regionalize the whole county, maybe a couple months ago, I'm thinking. It doesn't, I haven't been following it closely, it seems like this hit some snags to regionalize the number of towns there are in Berkshire County. And Franklin County has had, a couple years ago, had a study that also was trying to figure that out. I think the more rural you get, the more west you get, we've seen larger, more significant declines in, in student enrollment, and when you go, the further you go east, it has kind of an opposite or a different level.
Yeah, just saying.
Quick follow-up, I'd like to, I think, I, I take, I very much agree with Peter's point. The idea is not to vilify the university in any way, and I suspect that maybe our five colleges, and it's really more like a 10-college area, might insulate us from some of the losses that you find in rural Western Mass. But I just wanted, I remembered as you were speaking, that Mr. Horneck's study had found, not only has this impact happened in town where we've lost hundreds of, of families with, with eighteen, children 18 years or younger, he looked at the surrounding towns, and they have not had that loss. So he suspects that it is the housing crunch that's driving a lot of it.
And another, I don't know if you've looked at the, what is it, Sean Mangano did a presentation about the tax ceiling for each town, and in, in Amherst, is it, we're on, we're at...
Tax rates, just the rise of tax rates in our geographic region. Maybe it's a hard thing to ask, just part of it.
Thank you. Okay, well, I think it's time for us to move on, yeah.
I just, I want to follow up on the one thing Mr. Kelling said, just that we are engaged. It's a narrow slice of the impact of UMass. I think, I agree with you that just study the overall impact of, I mean, I don't know, that's not my field, but I would know where to begin. But the Donahue Institute is working with us and the town and UMass about the impact of students who live in tactically exempted housing on the UMass campus and the, the financial impact it has on our district, and most of that is on the Amherst public schools. They're looking at region too, but just frankly, 80, 90% of the students who live in tactically exempted housing in our district are at the elementary level in Amherst. So I think this spring, we'll see the kind of, what the report says, and then we'll have to engage with the town and the university on next steps around that.
Right, yeah.
I just wanted to say that.
Well, I think this has, this has been really, I mean, the, the question about marketing and how, how we really share what it is that we do and who we are, is something that has absolutely been on the table, and I, I think this is a really helpful sort of underpinning for that work as we go forward. I also, we didn't really talk about you, the whole piece that you talked about, the charter school and, you know, the, their, sort of why people have been chosen, and as a member of the dual immersion magnet subgroup, that's a really nice sort of entry point for, that, that will be part of our presentation as well, so that's, that's, you know, helpful. It's nice to see, I think as we get more discussions, we're gonna see how they, they dovetail with each other potentially, so. And I think this question of how could the school committee have more connection and dialogue with the housing, the various housing groups within the town is, is an interesting question, because I think we do have a lot on our plates, but how could we, you know, open up that dialogue, at least in a way that would be manageable and, and, you know, possibly productive? So, yeah.
Just one idea to think about perhaps for the superintendent and the committee is, for us to maybe invite one of these committees to a future meeting of the school committee, and maybe have some sort of joint conversation, because even though we may not necessarily be able to participate on a regular basis in, in these meetings, but having, starting the dialogue in a more formal way might actually help us move in the right direction.
Yeah, so just the next step I'd like to take on that is to meet with the town manager and just see what's the logical way that we could make that happen, since he is connected to those things, and just, what's logistic, I mean, not, I mean literal logistics, but the figurative logistics of getting more dialogue to occur.
That's what I would hope would happen.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Make sure that happens.
Okay, well, thank you so much. And now we get to have our next item on our menu. Very exciting.
We're waiting for one member.
Oh, we're still waiting for one member? Is that correct? Okay. So with the committee's permission, let's see, maybe we can move to the MSBA Statement of Interest discussion. Maybe we can move to the MSBA Statement of Interest discussion before we do that? Is that, find that's your next thing on the agenda? Okay. Okay. So we received, did everybody receive the announcement? Yes, that the window for MSBA Statements of Interest is now open. Just for the public's information, there are two programs. There's the core program, and the deadline is April 6th. And there's the accelerated repair program, correct, which is an earlier deadline. But for what we're talking about, we'd be looking at the core program. So Dr. Morris, can you do that?
Yeah, I mean, I think I'd like to make a relatively brief comment, take questions. And I'd like to add this when we think about future school committee planning. I do feel like two of our three elementary schools certainly fit the bill in terms of having deficiencies that would be appropriate to apply for, for the core program. One of the challenges is that one school has to be prioritized. You can apply for as many schools as you want, but the MSBA wants to know whether, which school you feel or that we feel is in the worst shape. And I think we're fortuitous, we're in a fortuitous situation that Mr. McPherson is here tonight, is new to the district and spending already a whole lot of time in our schools, so thank you for that. And what I'd like to ask him to do, and we've spoken about this, is to do a kind of, do kid on the block analysis of, not new kid on the block in terms of the, doing the work, but new kid on the block in terms of the buildings, of what the current deficiencies are at Fort River and Wildwood, knowing that we're, and this isn't forecasting, this is just saying something out loud that's true, the current boilers will be replaced at Wildwood. I'm not suggesting that that should tip the balance, but if you go there right now, you'll see very old boilers, and you won't in a couple of months from now. And then come, to come back to you at a meeting in February and make some recommendations around what school is, he believes is more, has more deficiencies and why. And to write up a report on that so that this body can consider that. As you may remember, we would need a vote from this body as well as a vote from the Amherst Select Board. So I think if we're able to do that in February, that gives the month of March for the Select Board to be able to consider and the request and potentially vote. If they vote affirmatively, we can still hit that April timeline that we have for the Statement of Interest to be submitted. So that's, I think, just the flow that I would recommend is to have some analysis done, come back, discuss that, make a decision at a school committee level, then bring on the Select Board. It's my opinion that this buildings are, have enough issues where it would, my recommendation would be to submit for both of them. The question around preference or priority, I think I trusted an expert in the room to be able to do that analysis and come back to this group.
Great, so we were, yeah.
Just before we get going, so is, so I understand the reasoning here. So is the, the value in understanding which building from professional analysis is more deficient, that you would want to prioritize that one because you would, that would then be more likely to be accepted? In other words, that would be the deciding factor in which one gets prioritized?
Sure, yeah. So, yes and, if you follow the MSBA process, you're prioritizing the one that you feel like is the most efficient and greatest need. So I think those two things are often, you know, they should be the same, but I wanted to cut the distinction that it's not, there's no politics being done here. I'm fully aware that there's, literally and figuratively, that there's a Fort River Building Committee, that's a feasibility committee that's looking at that. I want to follow the process honestly, which is which building is in the greatest need. Once we have that analysis done, bring it to you, and that would be, that's how I'd build my recommendation, both for getting in the MSBA process, but also to be honest and truthful to the MSBA process, to not be prioritizing one for a reason that's unrelated to its current condition. Sorry for my voice again.
I'm sorry.
Slightly better tonight.
So I'm just looking at our calendar. So it's looking like we will likely have that presentation on February, say, we have meetings on February 5th and February 27th? So that would, if we could do the 27th, then we would still have time? Is that, yeah?
That's what I was considering.
And just so I'm totally clear, I know we've been through this a lot before, but just for a refresher, so you're saying that we do, we have the option to submit SOIs for both schools, and then should we get selected to be in the pipeline? We can, that's when we prioritize, or we prioritize in the submission?
In the submission.
And we only apply for one?
We can apply for multiple, but you have to end the submission. If you apply for more than one school, there's a box to check if it's the priority between the multiple schools that a district applies for. You can think of large districts that might apply for many, many schools at one time, so...
I see, yep.
Ours is, I mean, we may be talking about two, which would be, you know, where I, how I feel right now, we'll come back after Mr. McPherson does his work. But there is a prioritization that they ask for.
Any questions on that? Any comments that you need to make at this point? Okay, excellent, great, thank you. Okay, how are we doing with our group?
We got them.
We got them?
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you so much. Okay, so we're ready to go back to the second item for Enrollment Working Group Presentations, the Special Education Group. Please come on up.
Can I make one comment as they're coming up? I just want to acknowledge that there's many people who are not on these subgroups, who are in the larger educational working group who are here, and like Mr. Lee, who presented and is staying to see others. So I just want to really acknowledge that other people are coming, and I'm sorry to see you there because you're out of my sight view. So I just, I really want to appreciate that, that people have, folks have an interest and are taking time to come and view presentations that they themselves didn't specifically work on. So I just want to acknowledge that point.
Thank you, yes, I'm seeing a lot of faces. Okay, yeah, come on up and if you would be, sit in the front row and stand up and speak into the microphone as, as, let me see that? And if you wouldn't mind introducing yourselves before you begin, so we know who you are.
Good evening. I'm Diane Chamberlain, interim principal at Fort River. I am here with my partners, who, we were the collective enrollment working group that focused on special education, Rhea Kopicki, Mary Lee Austin, and Joanne Smith. They will all have some things to share with you. But I'm a leadoff, and I'm kind of setting the stage for our work. The purpose of the special education part of the enrollment working group was to look at some of the concerns that came up when we delved into the implications of placement in these specialized programs that we offer in Amherst. And this came through the Wildwood Building Project. So we have these three specialized programs that are located in Fort River and Wildwood, one of them being the Academic Instructional Mainstream Support Program, the AIMS Program, which serves students generally on the autism spectrum. We have the Building Blocks Program, which serves students that have some social and emotional needs and some behavioral components of their profile. And then we also have the Intensive Learning Center, which is for students that have some complex needs, multiple, multiple needs. So the history in these, or some of the issues that came up as the project is what happens when students are placed in these programs, A, and what is the impact on their families? So not, being not at all the schools, are there issues around transportation and having families be able to fully access the school activities and be part of their students' school community? What happens to the siblings of those students? Do they stay in their homeschool? Are they allowed to go to the technically reassigned school if a student is reassigned? And also, if a student gets a certain set of skills and no longer needs the support of that program, what happens? Do they go back to their homeschool? Do they stay in the newly assigned school where they have now established a community? So those are the kind of the main things that we were looking at, but discovered some other things along the way as well. The history of the programs is about a decade ago, a little bit over a decade ago, through the coordinated program review, which is a typical process that DESI works with districts to kind of evaluate things. Amherst was, received the recommendation to increase our spectrum of services and make sure we were doing our due diligence to keep students in the least restricted environment and schooling them within their homeschool community, which we all know is best practice for students. So that was where these, the development of these programs came from. It's now ten, almost fifteen years later, and the programs have grown. We now see around eleven in AIMS, seventeen in Building Blocks, and fifteen in ILC. And that information is in the report here. Our report also tells you about our staffing that goes along with the programs. It also tells you about the ratios of the entire special ed population, which is impacted when students are reassigned, because there's some students that wouldn't normally go to Fort River or Wildwood that are assigned there because of their IEP needs that everybody has determined are appropriate. We also made mention that we are doing quite a good job of keeping our students in their home community. We are well below the state average. Our composite score at Amherst is about point six, and the state average is about one point one. So I'm going to pass it off now, actually. I think I've laid the groundwork for you. Happy to answer questions along the way, once we're through the report as well, but we...
Can you just clarify composite score?
Sure. So we don't have a specific score from the state just for Amherst, but there, so the state scores go, not score, but the state averages go K to 12. So we have a K to 12 number. And if you look at the specifics within our district, it kind of is, it's not a specific number, but that's our, that's our, the best we can get to, thinking of what Amherst does compared to the entire K-12. Because there's not a specific data point that the state registers just for the Amherst district.
About how many kids are being sent out of district? Is that, that's what, yes?
Right, about how many are out of district?
Yes, okay. This just gives us a relative number, even though we're not exactly...
And the numbers the state has registers are K to 12 system, not just specific to Amherst, so...
Got it, okay, thanks, yeah.
Thank you.
Hi there. So I'm going to take you through what the, what we did, which was basically to ask families who have kids in these three programs, a series of questions to get a sense of how they feel that they're doing. So, you've got this, but I'm going to, I'm going to walk us through. So a survey was sent to fifty-one families who have children who are either currently attending or some who had attended previously, and we still had contact information. It was sent in paper form by mail and also sent in electronic form by email with a link to the survey. It was written in both English and Spanish, which did encompass the languages used by those families. A reminder, automated telephone call was sent and email, and the deadline was extended so we could try to capture as much of this admittedly small number that we could, right? We're starting with a total of fifty-one. So the overall response rate was twenty-seven percent, a little bit higher for folks whose children attended a different school than they would have gone to based on residence than for same school. So first, some good news. The general satisfaction of families in these programs of their overall school experience was good. Third said they were very satisfied, two-thirds were somewhat satisfied, nobody was unsatisfied. So one of the things that we learned from our enrollment working group is to look at verified causes, so that's what I'm going to kind of dive into next. One of the things we wanted to ask about was transportation. And that was, these were, did people have challenges? And that was not verified by our data. There were only two comments that were related to transportational challenges, and that was mostly related to specific issues on buses and that, so nobody was unsatisfied from a, from a transportation standpoint. Most families would prefer to have siblings attend the same school. That was true in, in both the same and different school groups. And only two respondents for whom it was even applicable, as in they had siblings, felt that it was unimportant. While attending the school that they would be assigned by residence is important to families, it was interesting that the majority, even that were at a different school, would prefer not to change schools if they no longer needed those services. So they had been in one of these programs, they no longer needed them, and would they want to stay where they are? And the answer was predominantly yes. Where there was more mixed results was on the experience of being, feeling part of the community. We asked a lot of these kind of point-blank questions, but then we wanted to know what was their sense. About half of families whose children attended a different school from that which they would based on residence didn't feel as much a part of the community. And there were some comments talking about their sense of inclusion, both in and interestingly in their, in the schools, which overall was described as very welcoming. Efforts are being made to include our family, that families feel part of the day community at school. But a lot of the concerns were actually outside of school. And the feelings of awkwardness and barriers to connections and feeling a sense of otherness was more in the larger community, their experiences in the larger community. In the schools, we're doing a good job. So once again, to kind of round out the, the overall experience, about, more than a third of respondents who provided additional commentary, just give us your thoughts, were expressing appreciation for the specialized programs and staff. And an example, they do an outstanding job educating my child, and their dedication is exceptional. So you have our survey form there, you have all of the results. One thing to note, I did send a correction. I don't know if you all got that, it came in a little bit late, but it corrected just some of the numbers, some of the percentages for important to have your child attend the same, your children, siblings attend the same school. That's been corrected. It was basically two-thirds of the folks who had kids in the same school would want to have, it was very important to them, so sorry about that.
Okay, I'm going to talk just a little bit about the research pertaining to special education services, so...
Could you just introduce yourself?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Mary Lee Austin. I'm a physical therapist for the district and I parent kids in the district as well. So different districts provide special ed services and all kinds of different models. So regardless of how they're, they're provided, there are certain regulations and laws that all districts are bound to. Massachusetts Regulation 603 CMR 28 and federal law, the Individuals for Disabilities with Education Act, both require us, both require all, all public school districts to educate students in the least restrictive environment. They also require IEP teams to first look at in-district placements before looking at There was a study done by Dr. Thomas Hare. He works for the Harvard Graduate School of Education. He did a study in 2014 that looked at special ed services in districts throughout the state of Massachusetts. And the conclusion that was made from that report was that students who are in full inclusion settings, which is described, defined as being in a general education setting for eighty percent or more of their day, those students are faring better than students in more restrictive environments. Specifically, what he found was those students are getting higher MCAS scores, they have higher rates of on-time graduation, and, sorry, I'm not there. They are less likely to be placed in out-of-district settings. So kind of going back to our programming, however, however our programs are provided, those are things that we, we need to abide by those laws. And I think that study supported that it's best practice as well for the students.
Good evening. I'm Joanne Smith. I'm a special ed administrator and a parent at the regional level. I guess I get to claim that now. So as my esteemed team members here, they've shared a lot of information, and I think the walkaways for us were what was, what were the most salient pieces that we thought would be helpful for you to know? We had such a very specific, narrow target comparative to, it's kind of hard to come after the other group around the declining enrollment. They did a phenomenal job, shout out to them. But what our job was really specific, because as we looked at the issues that had been raised previously, including some of the issues from CPAC and in looking at the building project, we focused on that, but felt like there are other areas that we really needed to explore. We just didn't, within our time constraints, couldn't get there. So a couple of pieces I just want to point out before I go over the potential solutions were the, were the special ed percentages. Diane mentioned them early on in one of your charts. It talks about what's the percentage in that school of students on IEPs. So if you were to look at that chart again, I just want to illustrate it because I do think it's important to note that Crocker Farm, and again, these are students K through six, we do acknowledge Crocker Farm has preschool as well, but absent the preschoolers. Crocker Farm's percentage overall is seventeen percent. Wildwood is nineteen percent, but Fort River is actually twenty-six percent. And that is where we actually have two, three districts housed. And in fact, when we look at the configurations, and Diane had shared the numbers, the numbers are higher if you combine those programs. I think she quoted eleven, she's better at the numbers than I am, eleven and seventeen. So we're talking about twenty-eight students in Fort River are there designated for the program. And then the other chart she talked, there's another chart that she just illustrated in there as well, which actually had delineated how many of those students are in that building and they normally or typically would be because they live in that resident geographical area, and how they come from one of the other schools. So I think as we look at our potential solutions or next steps for you all to consider, those are really important features I just wanted to, to point out for you, okay? The other piece too, just has to do with... The other piece too just has to do with some of our historical practice and our report cites the, we used to have the open enrollment policy, which is currently suspended and that's also referenced in the report. And I think having been around at the time and looking at the open enrollment, I think there was a little bit of an unintended impact for this particular population. And I'll get into that in a second, okay? So, when we look at the solutions, just as I mentioned with the open enrollment, historically, families were able to apply a request to go to a different elementary school than they would typically be assigned based upon where they lived. Now, because that's suspended, and we don't have data that's a direct correlation, but an inclination that because families aren't able to do that, now siblings are divided if they're not in the same, if the program is not in their resident district. Where historically, I think our general sense is, is they could have opted if they wanted to keep their family, their siblings together in the same school, they could have gone through the open enrollment process, okay? So I think one of the suggestions that we would ask you all or have offered you all to consider amongst the depth of your work is whether to revisit that component for the siblings of students who attend the specialized programs. So that would be one piece in there. And then the other part that was so well pointed out, I think also in our policy, it also would suggest that students have to return back to their home school after they finish with the program. And what we find is, is some of our students are ready. They no longer need the specialized programming. They've developed that core set of skills and they're ready, but they may only have a year or year and a half left of elementary school. And the challenge being then they would be returning them to their resident school, but they've established themselves as a member of the community of their attending school. So I think that's something worthy to look at and whether to suspend that as a second component or to allow that as a second component. Another piece that we talked about, again, our time constraints are limited, but certainly Maria was able to do extensive research on the number of districts out there. There's about 40 who are similar in their composition. And wondering, trying to look at the, the value added, whether to reach out to those school districts and ask them how they tackle with the same issues. Do they, what have they learned? Is there anything they could offer to us as a district? I don't know that that would change our parents' experience based upon the responses, but I think that's important to consider for you all. One of the pieces that we did not include because our survey was focused on the parent and the family experience was we really didn't have any time or we didn't have that component in our survey around the staff. What is the experience in your building? When you look at 28% or 26, excuse me, in one building, that's a fairly high number of students in one building with just IEPs. I think Fort River does an exceptional job, as do the other two schools, Wildwood and Crocker Farm. But I do think it's a realistic thing that we need to look a little bit further at is what is the impact for the whole school? I would say both the positive enriching aspects and what are the additional academic demands that come with that. So that would be our third. The fourth one, in part, I think because we did not get as many parent responses and then some of the parent responses we received to the survey or the open-ended component of the survey, felt like it warranted further discussion, right? And especially when families articulated that they didn't feel part of the community, they felt awkward or they didn't know how to facilitate and make a relationship or connection. And I, I think we saw that theme in general for some parents with students with special needs is, you know, how do you help other people understand, like it's a wonderful kid, right? And how do you make those relationships and connections? And so I think there was room for us where we really talked about, we need to hear from parents and create some type of a forum that gives them more voice. And then the last one, and I think this is intertwined with different levels of work that, that you all have thought of and may pursue or have looked at. But this concept of looking at our program models. So I've been in the district, oh gosh, 28 years? Same time as Nick Yaffe. If Nick's here, I can say it's the same time. So, one of the things is to look at the models because when I first started, we didn't have all these programs because there wasn't the demand in the number of students who needed that level of specialization and/or there were a number of students who were out of district because we didn't have in-district programming. But with the programs being, we use the word centralized, meaning in just one elementary school. Now, we only have three, so it's kind of hard to figure that out. But to look at, what are some other options? And that obviously has different physical and fiscal and financial implications to it in terms of space and whatnot. So those are things we would just ask you all to consider and we appreciate being able to look at this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. And that is really extremely informative and a great place for our, to further our discussion about this really important topic. I'm going to start by turning to the committee. Is there anything people want to jump in with? Right away, yeah? Mr. Donahue?
I, I wonder, well, the first two, I guess I have two points. So some, there are 51 students enrolled currently in these, these three programs. And the, the survey went out, were there any, did you capture any exit interviews? Or, you know, has the district recorded people who have left, you know, these programs? Because I'm, you know, there are families that do leave these programs. And the other question was, do we, is there a, a, a look at these three programs? And are they still viable in terms of how we're organizing it? And with respect to whether it be in one building or, you know, and I, I guess it's a cost savings that we're consolidating it into one building or, you know, two buildings. But is there, like looking into the future, what can we do in terms of these three programs?
Did I get it? Did I get it?
Yeah, I got it. I'll answer the, the first part in terms of your question about exit interviews. So what happens because students end up in the specialized programs as determined by an IEP team? It's an IEP team that makes the determination if that level of support is no longer warranted. So it's in that context where conversation occurs directly about the student we're supposed to be focused. So we don't hold a separate exit interview as if they were leaving the district because they're still our students. It's just the level of programming and support changes. So we don't have that as a component because teams are actively talking about the student all through the process. Okay? And then.
I like the idea of that.
You like, she left. Okay, great. And then, do you want to answer the second part?
About viability, I'm ready.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm curious about what you mean by viability? That was my, I was going to ask a clarifier.
Right, right. I mean, I, do we, do we foresee that these three programs exist in our district?
Yes, yes. Over time, over the last decade that they've been in existence, we have seen the need for those kind of comprehensive wraparound services actually increase with the population changing a bit. More and more students have needed the, the services of the program. And we do anticipate that they'll either stay static or continue to grow.
And just, and so these are least, considered least restrictive?
Yes.
Settings? Okay, so 80% of their time, what is that?
Great question. So, 80% of the time really goes to the, the determination of if it's a full inclusion program or not. So, not every one of the students that are in the program are reaching that threshold of 80% to be considered fully included. That's our goal for all of them, to be included to the maximum extent possible. But if you look at the range of services and the comprehensiveness of the programs, if you add students that have potentially speech three times a week and OT twice a week and, or PT twice a week and then may need some additional self-contained academics, if you add up all those minutes in the day, it may not reach that 80% threshold. So there are students that are in the program that are considered partially included. But again, included to the maximum extent the team feels is appropriate for them. So does that help?
Yes.
Okay.
I saw two, I'll defer to, I saw multiple subcommittee members.
Yep, yep, okay.
Yes, do you mind?
No, please.
Okay, great, I get to go before the superintendent. No, I think one of the clarifiers that I think is important in terms of talking about the percentage, what we're talking about is the percentage of involvement, what we call the placement. There's a placement continuum when a student is in district. They can be full included, partially included in a substantially separate classroom. And then the next levels look at out-of-district or an in-district, I mean, sub-separate program. Sorry. Full, partial, substantially separate, then out-of-district, public or private. What Diane was referencing is actually, it's an interesting way that the state does it because they call students, or they consider them fully included if the total number of minutes in their program when they're not in the classroom is less than 21%. So, I know this is going to be a little bit dry, but at the elementary level, there's 1,900 minutes in a given week to educate an elementary student. So then you start adding up how much service you subtract, you calculate your percentage. And so, one of the things I just wanted to point out is, with students who are in the district programs, we are an inclusive-based belief system that students learn and benefit most often by being with their typical peers. However, students have a continuum and array of needs. So some students may need more and some students may need less. But we have students who are in our district program that are considered fully included. They're fully included in their IEP calls for full inclusion and that's because the level of support they're getting through this wraparound and this intensive programming allows them to be with their typical peers a high number, a high percentage, a high degree. What we don't do is, is we don't currently have any programming because it's not consistent with our belief system or the needs of the students. We don't have any students who spend their entire day all year long outside of the classroom. We don't run just a, a building blocks classroom all by itself all day. Okay, so I think it's important to contextualize that. And then the other piece about the percentage that was being talked about a little bit, full inclusion, partial, is that's true for any student on an IEP. So we have students who are, may not participate in a district program and the number of minutes of their services could be partial inclusion as well. So I think it's a tough one to start looking at the percentages that way without looking at it in the broad context of all students on IEPs. Okay?
That makes a lot of sense. I just wanted to address your questions as well. I had a couple of other things. So, while there isn't an exit interview, we did reach out. We, in order to expand our N, our sample size, there's, there's actually 44 families. And so it's 51 because we had some contact information still. So, some of the, and I, but I believe it was, correct me if I'm wrong, Joanne, I think it was only one of those additional seven were from somebody that had left the program. So that's one thing. And I think that one of the other things that we talked about, but again, it wasn't really in our purview or in our timeframe to address, was the concept of centralization versus decentralization. And I think that might be part of what, it might, may or may not be part of what you're asking. When I looked at, I looked at all districts in Massachusetts and when I say that there's about 40 that are like us, I don't mean that are like us in that they have these programs in this format. What I'm, that is, there are 40 districts that have multi, about the same number of elementary schools at about the same overall enrollment. So, they kind of look like us in numbers as a district. And what you could do, and, you know, some of us I'm sure would be happy to help you, is to let you, you know, who those are. But the, the idea is to ask them, because some of them do what we're doing and have centralized programs. So you have more kids in one place and you, and you bring the services to them. Or there's other places that keep kids dispersed with similar needs, but just, they are dispersed and, and do it in a completely different way. And to ask those districts, you know, to find out, how are you doing it? What are the problems you're facing? How are you solving those problems? I mean, I think that's something that we could go on and study. It just wasn't in what we were going to be able to accomplish. And we tried to do a review of the research and the literature to find out, you know, what does, what does, what does the research tell us about this? And there's really not much out there to tell us which is better, which is worse. And it's also limited by the fact that there's not a lot of objective parameters to say, this is, this is how we know that these students are doing better with this particular program. We can't, it's not like MCAS scores, so you can't, you know, or some other standardized test. That's a, it's a frustrating limitation, so it's hard to, to do that evaluation.
Thank you, yeah.
If I could add to Maria's comments there. One of the hard things about kind of larger scale research is there's a wide variance in special ed percentages state by state because the rules that are set about who qualifies for an IEP is really different. So in some states, you know, our state averages, I think, I'm guessing 17, 18%, is that about right?
Somewhere around 19%.
Yeah. And, and in some states, if you had a school that was at that percentage or a district, you'd be way out of compliance. Like you'd be, you'd be such an outlier because that'd be so high as compared to what's the normative sample in that state. So it makes doing that research, excuse me, really challenging. I think, I just want to thank this group and note that I appreciate the level of sophistication of the data analysis of the survey. And to your question about viability, it's something that, you know, we talk about frequently. And I think as, I'm taking in all these reports, as we spoke about last time sometime in March, I hope to bring back some thoughts about what I heard, what are things we might explore around all these dimensions. So, I think that's sort of my job as we set it out from the beginning last spring. For better or worse, I suggested that. And so I think after the next two presentations in early February, I'm going to need a little bit of time to sort through that. But I do plan, I think, you know, it's March 13th, whatever the March meeting date is, I don't have it off the top of my head, to really come back and to be able to share some possible step forwards that we might consider making. I don't think there'd be anything that for the next fiscal, the next fiscal year that would be just reasonable to take. I think some of the things we are doing, like I think about the first presentation and things with the communication and some of those things. But I'm going to need a little time to sort through five incredibly, I mean, we saw three wonderfully data-based and focused reports and think through that approach. But I do think that's something that I'm taking on and we'll get to my goals later. But that's something that I think is one of my, my key tasks this, this spring for the AMERIS Public Schools.
Yes. I just wanted to pipe in. I think, you know, also thank you all for the work that you put together and this is really amazing. And I, I think just as you're thinking about this, Dr. Morris, for that presentation back, I mean, one of the questions that I had was, I appreciate Ms. Kapicki's research but also statement about the, you know, the 40 communities that were looked at or the 40 districts that were looked at were similar in ours, but not necessarily the programs. And so I'm wondering if maybe, you know, in, in order to help inform your thinking to look at other districts with similar programs might actually be very helpful. I know that I would appreciate that information. But, you know, similar programs and then also perhaps with multiple schools because I could imagine some smaller districts that might have similar programs and perhaps just one or two schools. But I think that the real challenge that we're trying to solve here is for schools with multiple, or districts with multiple schools that have similar programs, how are the students and families being separated, you know, within those? Are they centralized or are they dispersed? And then another sort of underpinning question that I think is important for all of us to ask at this time is the intent of inclusion?
Yeah.
Because I think, you know, there, there are obviously some, some various, you know, important reasons for having a centralized program, like we have at Fort River. And Fort River is my, my son's school. So it holds a very special place in my heart. And my children love all of their, you know, students that they go to school with and really get a lot from the rich community that's there. But I think, you know, it, it is a valid question to ask ourselves is, you know, are we at a point in our, in our community's time where we should start thinking about, you know, if we're, if we're actually want to be intentional about inclusion, perhaps we also need to think about the experience that other students are having in other schools that don't necessarily have the same caliber of programs that Fort River has for, you know, students with special needs, right? And again, you know, thinking through the lens of my sons who get so much from their, their classmates. You know, they, they have friends across the board, right? There's, you know, different capacities, different levels of education. And so that's a value that I think, you know, Fort River brings to my, my children. I would hope that other families and other schools would also experience the same level of value. So, those are the things. So those are the things that I, that I would urge us to think about as we move forward with this. But thank you once again.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And I, I just wanted to note, sort of, you know, positive pieces that we're hearing is, last, when was it that we were, we heard the, about the special education survey that went out and just how positive those results are in terms of satisfaction and how much growth we've seen over the past 10 years. And thank you, Dr. Brady, for bringing that to us at our, our earlier meeting. And just, you know, that our, we have, we have a lot of really strong program, and that's a really positive thing. And also I think that the piece about how in the, the, a sense of feeling included within communities, within, within the schools, the sense overall was that that was a very, very strong, it was quite strong. People did feel included. So I know all three of our principals are here, and I just want to note that that's, that's a really positive result to hear. So one question that either for the group or that maybe I would, would be possibly want to consider exploring further is, you know, this question about, about open enrollment for siblings and for students who have been in a program and maybe, maybe graduated out of it, and, you know, do they, are they able to stay in the school? Do they need to leave? Obviously, it's pretty clear to hear what the benefits of, of opening a program like that be, would be, but what, you know, I, I assume it's more, it's complicated, everything is complicated, and what are the implications, both sort of positive and, you know, possibly transportation, all those pieces. I don't know if that's something to explore at all, or if that's something we might want to look into further. I guess I'll ask you first.
Did we explore?
Did you explore? No, no, okay.
We did, we did feel that that was boring.
Right, no, not, I just wanted to ask, ask before, but is that something that we might look into further? I don't know where, sort of where we are in that as a district.
The thing that I will say about that though, is that's a really hard thing to pinpoint because the population shifts dramatically, even year to year, based on the enrollment in those programs. So what may be a specific need today may change in two months based on, not that the, the doors of those programs revolve that significantly, but from year to year it certainly does, from students going to middle school and coming into elementary school. So that'd be a tough thing to pinpoint specifically because it does shift each year, if that makes, if that's helpful.
Pinpoint in terms of what?
Like what the specific transportation needs would be for siblings, or if we were to do open enrollment. So those things shift dramatically from year to year.
So you could, but you could say, you know, if this, this is the kind of potential challenge that could arise, should we do this? You know, couldn't we sort of play it out, you know, what, what, what may, you know, maybe challenging for the district and what are the positives in that?
Naming them we can do, yes.
Right.
So my instinct is to say it'd be a big topic that we should talk about as its own agenda item if the committee wants to take it on. I think the two things that my, because I was a principal when we had open enrollment, I was a principal when we didn't have open enrollment. So I think the positive, I don't disagree with anything in the report. I want, I want to be perceived at that, I think it's worth considering. The prior, my prior experience with open enrollment, the policy was, did not include transportation. So one of the challenges from an equity perspective is if you were able to transport your child, then open enrollment was open to you. If you were not able to transport your child, open enrollment was not truly open to you. And so I think that would merit some, some discussion, also some feasibility, looking at the feasibility of that. But I want to be really clear that one of the challenges of open enrollment historically from an equity perspective is, is like a lot of things around equity, right? It's open, but it's not open to everyone. So the name was, didn't really, you know.
Misnomer.
A little bit. And I think it was also contingent on space, right? Space, not literal physical space, but you know, if there was going to be space in a class, and it never really was defined what that meant. So it left it to principals like myself to, to manage that. So if you have a kindergarten class and you have 19 or 20 kids, do you open it up for that extra slot for the kid who's got a third grader in a specialized program? What if that grade level gets larger? Are you adding a teacher, right? There's all those variables. So I don't want to, I don't want to go deeper than that, but I just want to say, like, on the other side of the sort of obvious, we should just do this, this makes sense, we have a lot of data, which I don't disagree with anything, again, you know, anything you said, the logistics of that and the access to it for all students, I think that's where the rubber meets the road and gets a little complicated. So I think a, a separate conversation around that might be warranted.
Right. That's, what you're saying is exactly what I'm talking about.
Okay.
You know, it sounds, it sounds like, oh, wouldn't that be good? But of course, there are all these other implications that, you know, as you dig deeper, it becomes increasingly complicated. Yeah.
I just, I just want to clarify, from, from the standpoint of speaking for our group, so we're not, as a group, we are not telling, suggesting that the entire open enrollment policy, what we were specifically saying is that for this group of, and what it amounts to, I mean, 44 total families, but, I mean, less than 30 of them are at a different school. So what we're suggesting that there could be some flexibility, perhaps, added into those two policies that affect this, this group who are in some instances, being, you know, asked to travel to a different school to make some accommodation for them.
Yeah.
And to say, you can bring your sibling to this school, and you can stay in this school. So it's really a matter of flexibility for a specific reason, for a specific group. So is that fair, guys?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I appreciate the point, yeah. And I, again, I wouldn't disagree with anything that was just shared, but I think there's the variables around logistics, however small, large or small. I mean, we didn't used to have tons of students going back and forth. I mean, Nick was certainly a principal with me when, when that policy was there. But how does it mean, when I said all, you know, and that's a good clarifier, I'm not talking for all students because I didn't take the group to say that. But I think, thinking about how that, that policy would be applied to this population just warrants more in-depth conversation.
Okay. And is that, I mean, is that something that, should I, yes. You've been there for a really long time.
Yes.
But even thinking about all.
Sit right in front of me.
Is significant, too. If you're not thinking about all of the whole community, but even just thinking all of just this population, the same.
Yes. Equity within this population, right.
It was good conversation. I'm patient first.
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments on, not specifically this, well, sort of related to this topic. I really appreciate the attention and care that went into the survey and trying to get as much responses as possible. Getting response rate is very hard. So I know it's only 14, but you know, 27 percent for a survey is actually pretty good. So I appreciate that. And you're looking through the responses, you know, this is a real, like, personal review for me. So I had a child in the ILC program that was held at Wildwood for three years while we were in the Crocker Farm district. So I had, had this exact experience, and a lot of these themes were very resonant for me. So like, like the transportation question, did I have any challenges? I had no challenges because the transportation staff and coordinators were fantastic. It was a bummer that my child was on a van for as long as he was going through, you know, town. So that was, that was a, sort of a loss. The inclusion theme I, I find pretty fascinating because I feel like educationally, we should be offering the options on the spectrum as much as are available. And yet ultimately, the first driving principle ought to be what's educationally appropriate for that student. There were several times where I could have looked at my child's IEP and said, here's an opportunity where he could be more included in the regular classroom, but he wasn't getting anything out of that classroom at the time, right? And so it always comes down to how you, how you strike that balance. And then on a related theme, in terms of being included in the community, I mean, Principal Yaffey and everyone in Wildwood was incredibly gracious and friendly, and we always felt welcome there. And yet because of that geographic distance in the neighborhood, distance, there, there just aren't as much organic opportunities to connect with the community. And so, so there's that disconnect. And then, and then having less, knowing less students of that age in our own neighborhood as a result was, was an interesting combination. And so, you know, when I hear, you know, two-thirds family saying, you know, it would have been great if all my kids could go to the same school, like, I totally, totally get that. So, so I really like the number four recommendation of facilitated discussions with families to sort of get deeper into that, what that experience is. And also on a, on a practical note, switching gears a little bit, I really like the number three solution of discussing dialogue with staff to identify opportunities because my, my experience has been when talking to teachers in these various programs, it's, it's very specific to the program in terms of what enrollment policy and/or location might be more or less optimal. So for example, building blocks experiences more in and out of student participation than ILC or AMES does. And so that could affect with design whether we wanted to have that at one building or co-located. And I guess just on another very positive note is that, you know, you talk about the benefit of inclusion to the, the regular student community. You know, I was always, always amazed when I went to, whether it was graduation or chorus nights and open houses, how, how open and welcoming the students at Wildwood were to, to my son who has obvious special needs, right? And it wasn't because the teachers were telling them to, it was because they just organically absorbed that as a natural experience. And it was something that I didn't see happen as frequently with, with students in, in other settings, you know? And I, it, it never really occurred to me until much later, you know, I sort of, because it was just natural, I was just amazed at the friendliness of the Wildwood students. But, but it was definitely a positive, you know, of, and I just think of that as a greater theme in inclusion. So sorry to ramble a bit, but it was a, I found a lot of this very impactful. So thank you for your work.
Oh, yeah. Mr. Shay? Yeah, thank you. Absolutely.
My name is Derek Chia, the principal at Crocker Farm. The first thing I wanted to say, and so I, not that I want to try and correct what you said earlier, Mr. Dornis, but there was some sort of sense of, of, of perhaps, so here's what I would say, is that in other schools, we have a very wide range of kids' needs, social, emotional, behavioral needs. And, and the reason we have such a wide range is that we have very strong teams of counselors and therapists and various other people. So, so the point I guess I would make is that, is that as much per se, there's, say a building blocks program at, I think at Fort River, there are many children in all our schools who would actually possibly benefit from such types of programs. They just don't happen to go to that program. They happen to stay at Crocker Farm or they happen to stay at Wildwood.
Who are singing the same song.
Right. And so again, I, I think, you know, it, it would be interesting to see, you know, if, if the, if the, I think it's sometimes a challenge, how you separate the, the point twos and the ones and all the various experts who you need to sort of run these programs. But I do think in, in all of our schools, there are, there are certainly, again, a wide range of, of kids' needs. So, so that's just one thing. And the second thing I'd say is, just as a sort of minor support, given the last presentation talked about preschool again, I know that the, this presentation didn't tap into preschool. But I think it would be, it's just good to remember again, in, at Crocker Farm, there, there are approximately 68 preschool students, which is a fairly large number, somewhere in the region of 32, 33, 34 of those students have special education needs, five teachers, 15 paraprofessionals, 1.7 speech and language teachers, a behavioral specialist, I could probably keep going, somewhere in the region of like 20 to 25 staff. So again, very rich, you know, very sort of, you know, it helps broaden our community. The question for me at times would be, so is preschool restricted to Crocker Farm, or do we need to be thinking of even, you know, if there's expansion, which, you know, it's hard to do at Crocker Farm, there's not a lot of room, can we be thinking about, about other schools perhaps, of youngsters of that old, because it's similar. You may have a student that goes to the preschool special education at Crocker Farm, but then you have a youngster who goes to another school somewhere else in the district. So anyway, there's just a couple of things. I just want to give a little shout out for preschool because I know that that's a, again, 68 kids is a fairly big number and a large number of people who work there.
Yes.
So on that note, for a preview, for people who can't get enough of the enrollment working group, I think it's February 5th is the next meeting, and there's a presentation of the subgroup that focused specifically on preschool. I think the, just the last thing I want to say on this one is to Mr. Demling's point, which was referencing one of the recommendations, I think we've shared that, Ms. Cunningham and I visited all the schools for optional meetings after, after I was put into the permanent position. And I think I've shared the four questions off the top of my head. I have them closely, close to what they were, which was, you know, what do you love about working here? What do you think the school does really well? What are some of the challenges? And what are some potential ideas to improve the school, the district? And I would say this question around centralization and kind of the balance came up, right? And neither Ms. Cunningham nor I asked that question. I mean, those were literally the four questions we asked, and it was an open-ended dialogue. So I do think we, it's not exactly the same as what you're suggesting, but I think we did get some insight. And I think it's valuable to talk to the program staff. It's also really valuable to talk to classroom teachers who are where the inclusion's happening, right? So it's no disrespect to folks who are special educators, but the reality is, in, in all of our programs which have inclusive settings, classroom teachers are also supporting that work. It's not only special educators, it's general educators as well. So we got a lot of feedback on the perceptions of staff around that. And I think when I come back in March and share some of my thoughts, I'll include some of those notes. We just have never sort of had time to get back to sharing some of those things because our agendas feel awful packed, or are also packed. But it was certainly a topic that came up in multiple schools and not equally, right? Some schools, because of their experiences, had other, had kind of specific things to say that I thought were quite informative, and I'll definitely share back with the committee. I don't want to go deep into it now because I think it's starting to get tangential a little bit.
Great. Well, thank you all so much again.
Thank you.
And come back next time if you want to hear more. Thank you all. Okay, great. So we're now going to move on to our initial budget presentation.
Sean, do you want to, since we have an extra seat because Mr. Nakajima is not here?
Yes.
Or there. I'll be back in a moment.
Thank you.
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 Hello. My name is Sean Manigano, Director of Finance for the Schools. briefer than last night. So some of the budget highlights, very similar again to last night. This, the proposed FY19 budget maintains high-quality dedicated staff, community and school programs such as the Family Center. At the elementary level, we have school gardens, arts, art integration, average class sizes that promote learning, high-quality and district specialized programs that you just heard about, and a wide array of specials that include music, library, physical education, art, and technology. We do have a significant level of reductions this year, driven by rising health insurance costs, which will impact the district. The proposed budget is $23,227, or $23,227,365, which includes $556,437 of reductions. And on a positive note, on our out-of-district enrollment figures, both charter and choice declined in FY18, which is the first time probably since I've been here, so many years, that both of those numbers have gone down. So this chart just shows that a little bit. So it's actually very similar to one of the charts you saw earlier. But the blue bar is our choice out of district, and the red bar is our charter out of district. So you can see, choice has been sort of up and down over the years, but charter has definitely trended upwards. But for FY18 enrolled, you can see that that actually went down, both for charter and choice. And based on that, what we're projecting for FY19 is also staying flat or going down a little bit. Dr. Morris, is there anything you want to say before I keep going, or?
I think you're good to go.
Okay. So I'll make sure. Getting to our budget timeline, so similar to region, we did a goal review, we did key indicators, a fee review, capital plan. We kind of combined the strategic program reviews between region and Amherst. Some of the programs that we looked at covered K through 12, like the one-to-one program. Tonight's the budget presentation. We will have the public hearing and the presentation of detailed additions and reductions on the 27th, unless that's changed, Dr. Morris. I don't know if that's changed at this point now. And if all goes well, the budget is set to be voted on March 13th. So a little bit about the budget process. We reach out to elementary principals and directors to review their budgets. At the elementary level, supplies are really adjusted up or down each year based on enrollment at the schools. So we keep sort of a equal weight to certain supply lines for each school. In November and December, we get guidance from you all, and we also get guidance a little bit earlier from the finance committee. We want to thank for changing their financial guidance from a 2.5 percent increase to a 3.5 percent increase, which definitely impacted our budget this year. We have our budget hearing scheduled for next month, and then again, the budget will be voted on March 13th. So this is our expense budget. So total salaries, you can see going down by 266. So, we were able to use more school choice funds to support the budget. Substitutes we're projecting going up a little bit based on our experience. And then, in total expense accounts, that's really the big number. And most of the increase there is in health insurance, which is a little under $1 million or around $1 million. And then, there's also a placeholder for the outcome of negotiations in control accounts, which is making up most of the balance of that. And as I said last night, in salaries right now, there's no wage increase there because we're in negotiations. Mr. Demling?
So, ballpark, was it about a million increase in AMERIS for the health insurance and 1.3 in the region?
So, the 1.3 in the region was because there was an impact on the revenue side. The, on the expense side, it was a little over a million in the region, too. And AMERIS is in a similar place, it's a little bit less than region. There it is. So, health insurance increase of, health insurance increase in AMERIS of $818,484 due to rising premiums. A couple of other things just to be aware of, like I just said, wages are still being negotiated. We haven't locked in long-term contracts for oil or electricity yet. We're sort of getting close. We're watching the futures market very closely, and we hope to be able to bring back some savings once we lock in. Food services is stable. I think that's one thing we've been trying to keep an eye on this year very closely, as we brought the program back in district. I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but things are looking pretty good with food services so far. We'll bring back more data on that in the future. And as I said, increase of funding provided by school choice, and that's really tied to the revenue we're bringing in. So, we try to marry how much we use to support the budget with the revenue we bring in.
See, the only thing I would add to the last point that Mr. Mangato said is, it's not as significant a variable, but we also have a decline in school choice out costs. So, we're increasing our revenue from school choice and reducing our expenses for school choice. So, the delta between those is, has grown, but it's certainly, I don't disagree with, the larger contributor to the delta is the increase in revenue, but the decrease, the decline in expense of choice out students also contributes to the delta, which is what we focus on.
So, moving to additions and reductions, so this is more of what you're accustomed to at this stage in the budget process, which is a very high-level breakdown of what we're thinking for additions and reductions next year. We will bring back the detailed additions and reductions at the next meeting. You'll get that at least a week ahead of that meeting, so you can digest that. But I'll just go through them quickly. So, we break this into three sections, budget adjustments, budget additions, and reductions. Adjustments are things that are not really a programmatic reduction, but it's more if enrollment shifts up or down, or things that just sort of fluctuate year to year. Budget additions, you can see there's a preschool addition being proposed, ELL addition being proposed, and then something in support services. And in reductions, support services is going down $25,000. Central office is going down $73,000. Insurance and benefits, $80,000. Control accounts, $24,000. Special education, $40,000. District-wide, $70,000. Maintenance, $25,000. And regular instruction, $142,000. And again, we'll get into much more detail at the next meeting on what those numbers mean. Mr. Demling?
Sorry, Mr. Mangato, I apologize. It's just because I'm looking over here. I don't care about you.
So, is now with the next meeting, when you could estimate how much of that FTE is attrition and how much is actual people?
I would, much like the region, that variable of our focus on where there's attrition and filling that is true. I, in this situation, in terms of 5.05 for AMERIS, the majority is through attrition. Yeah, I think that's probably the level of detail I can offer at this point. But if this budget stays and holds, the well over 50% of the staffing reductions would be done through, by attrition. Yeah. And by attrition, I just want to be really clear, I'm talking about folks who are on permanent contracts. I don't mean PTS, like having tenure, but just, we do have staff who are on one-year contracts for a whole host of, you know, maternity leave, things like that. So, when I say attrition, I'm talking about people we've hired on a permanent contract.
Excuse me, could I just ask on the district-wide what that means?
District-wide, so, district-wide, I don't think this one is giving away anything. So...
That's okay.
No, I can answer. So, this would be supply accounts. So, one thing we did this year to cope with the health insurance increase that we saw mid-year was a 10% reduction to supply accounts across the board. So, that, the reason it's district-wide is because it's both at the school level, also at the central office level, facilities, IS. So, what this would do is maintain that 10% reduction next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we have a few charts here that just illustrate some budget trends. So, the first one here is regular education classroom instructional spending. So, all these charts are actually in your binder in the line-by-line section. I just broke out a few that are sort of interesting, really just to give you sort of a taste of what's in there, and you can dig into that tonight if you want. So, this first one I thought was an interesting trend, because you can see it's steadily gone down since FY16. When I dug into the numbers as to why, it's been a couple of things. So, fewer classrooms is one, and we've seen some reduction in, based on enrollment in classrooms. And the other one is, we've had a lot of staff turnover via retirements and some other ways, that we've just had less expensive staff move into those positions. ELL spending, so, this goes along with some of the information you heard earlier. We have a higher percentage or a higher number of ELL students in the district, and so staffing has gone up as well. In addition, translation costs, tutor costs, things like that have gone up.
I'm sorry, can we go back to the chart just previous?
Sure.
So, I see here that you have a proposed sort of uptick from 19 to 21?
Yeah. Yeah, so what I've done across the board, really just for planning purposes, to be informational, is we've tried to provide a couple of years of projection forward. So, essentially what that does is, whatever's for FY19, if that was to carry forward for two-year, for FY20 and FY21, what would it look like? So, essentially what that looks at is a stagnant level of staffing, and then assume some sort of wage increase. So, that's why it starts to go back up, because there's a wage increase applied. It's an estimate, placeholder for now, because we don't know what those are. But it helps us sort of plan out what will potential future reductions look like if we have the same sort of levels we have now.
Okay. Thank you.
So, special education preschool spending. This one has steadily increased as well. I think staffing has fluctuated a little bit, mainly in the paraeducator realm. We've had sort of a consistent number of classrooms, but based on the needs of the students, sometimes paraeducators go up or down.
And just to go back, a couple of years ago, we extended, we offer, we now offer extended hours compared to what we did six, seven years ago. So, some of that uptick, particularly as you see kind of the larger jumps, or when we started offering preschool services to students, some students stay as late as 2:30. Back when I was at Crocker Farm, 12:30 or 1 o'clock is the end time for students. So, to do that, that involves increasing staffing levels.
And the other less positive thing about this chart is, our inclusive preschool grant is being phased out over four years. And so, some of the recent increase that started, I think, either last year or this year, it was the first year, as that grant gets phased out, the operating budget is having to pick up the difference. It was about a $75,000 grant that's being phased out, about $15,000 at a time.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that relates to another question, which is, so like generally speaking with the preschool budget, what percent is grant-funded versus budget-funded versus what you could tuition fee fund?
So, it used to be a lot of grant funds. So, there's really three pieces of the preschool funding picture. So, there's grants, fees, and then the operating budget. So, grants have gone way down. We used to have a CFCE grant, there were some other preschool grants that we had once upon a time. When the inclusive preschool grant goes away, I think that's our last grant that supports the preschool. I could be forgetting something, but I don't know if we will have any grant funding after that. Actually, we have one, we have one early childhood special education grant that has about $17,000 on it. So, we'll have a little bit of grant funding. Fees are generally between $40,000 and $50,000 a year we bring in. It's support somewhere around that. It's in the revolving fund section, so you can see the exact number. Supports about that much of the preschool program. And then, the balance, what you can see is in the $700,000 range, is supported by the operating budget. So, 90% or more is operating budget.
Right.
Yeah.
So, is fee schedule levels, is that something that is set internally by central office? Or is that something the school committee discusses?
So, we proposed, I think we went over this earlier, and it'll probably come up at the next meeting possibly, or at the March meeting. We did propose an increase to fees for this program. Right now, it's at 5.25 per hour. We're proposing an increase to 5.50 per hour. The fees for the program haven't been increased in a few years, so we are, we are proposing one, but it's up to the school committee to vote that schedule.
Can I just ask, as I'm looking at these graphs, I think it's hard for me to tell what kind of increases are just sort of expected increases because of time and inflation or whatever, and how much are, you know, indicating some sort of dramatic shift in funding or services or whatever?
Yeah. So, in the budget book, there's a little box that says, like, if it says like a sort of steady increase, I'll just say stable. If there's something worth noting, it'll put it in that little chart.
Right, okay. Thank you.
So, insurance and benefits, so what's not a normal increase would be that shift you see in F, from FY18 to FY19, and really in FY18 from FY17. Those are million-dollar increments on the left side, so you can see it's going up about $900,000 from FY18 to FY19. And then, what we're expecting for this year, based on the mid-year increases, went up about $500,000 or $500,000. So, that's it for trends, just again, to give you a little taste. So, a couple of other things I put in here, which actually speaks to some of the questions that we just received. This is from the grant section, so this gives you an idea of what grants we have this year and what we think grants will look like for next year. So, just to pick out a few, you can see the inclusive preschool learning environments grant, that was the one I mentioned. This year, it's providing about, last year provided about $78,000, which was sort of the steady number for a while. This year, it's down to $57,000, and next year, it's projected to go down to $38,000, and then it'll keep going down until it's completely gone. The special at early childhood one is right below that, and it's about, between the, what the payroll accounts and the expense account section, it's about $16,000 or $17,000. And you can see the other grants we have, the two biggest ones, Title I and the special education IDEA grant. On the revolving fund side, again, same thing, broken out between payroll accounts and expense accounts. Circuit breaker is one that is sort of in the news recently, because the funding level for this year went from 73%, I think it was last year, went down to 65% this year. And that's money we get for serving special education students when their costs exceed a certain level, that we get reimbursement from the state. And so, the percentage of reimbursement went down. But we get, for next year, we're expecting to have about $200,000 to offset the operating budget. Another one on there is the preschool, which you can see there's about $54,000 being used as, next year, being budgeted as expenses. And then, you also have food services and a few other little ones mixed in. And school choice, you can see the uptick I was talking about in school choice funding. So, because school choice is still relatively new in AMERIS, we've been slowly ramping up how much funding we've been using to support the budget. However, this year, we did kind of bring it up to what we're bringing in revenues, because our fund balance in that, in the school choice fund is substantial, to the point where it doesn't, we don't need to grow it anymore. So, we are using roughly what we think we're bringing in for FY18. Mr. Demling?
So, that's 70 for preschool revolving. Is that the total preschool expense other than fees and grants?
So, the, so the bottom is revenue. So, that's roughly what we think we're going to bring in in tuition.
Okay.
What we actually, of that 70,000, how much of that we use to support the operating budget is the two above that, the expense accounts and the payroll accounts. So, it's about $54,000. A few years ago, the preschool revolving fund was heading in a bad direction. So, we actually shifted some staff off, and we wanted to try to build it back up. So, that's why we don't use exactly what we bring in each year. We're starting to, trying to build up a little bit of a balance in that fund. But yeah, that's what we bring in from tuitions and fees. And that program does have a, the tuitions and fees are calculated based on a sliding scale. So, there is a reduced rate, and there's many reduced rates in that program.
Can I just ask about the food services under revenue? So, it looks like from '15 to '16 to '17, it went down. And then, is this uptick that we're seeing, we're thinking linked to the change in programming?
Yeah, so it's still pretty early. This is right now projected based on this year. But we have seen increase in participation rates across the district that we're pretty excited about. And yeah, so a lot of that is just generated by increased participation rates at this point.
Which items then?
Food services.
Food services.
Yep.
Just a quick comment, I think we should be meeting at that stage on a regular basis.
We'll see. I want to wait till we get through a year, and then it's good news.
I hear you.
So, this same chart we showed last night, percentage of students that go out of district. This shows some of our neighbors in the AMERIS Pelham-Leveritt Shoots Perry System, so that's K-12 for the APLS. And you can see, we are the second from the bottom. So, across our region, there's been a growing trend of more students going out of district as charter schools in the area expand. But we do a good job, percentage-wise, of keeping students in district. And again, like I said yet last night, when we get the FY18 numbers, I think we're going to flatten out or possibly go down, hopefully, since I said it. But I think that, based on the numbers that we saw for charter and choice, actually, they did, went down, I'm excited to get that number, which we should have by the February These charts you've seen before around municipal spending. This was a placeholder, in case we had any other charts we wanted to show. And thank you. Any questions?
So, yeah, so one thing I'd like for the next meeting is the detail on what we were just discussing about the preschool fee schedule, the details on sliding scale, maybe how we compare to other area preschools, both private and district. Because one of the themes that, you know, emerged from watching this, I mean, I knew about the health insurance, so that's obviously a big theme going on, but it's a real wake-up call to me for funding a preschool. And I knew that we were going down in some of our grants, but it really makes me take a step back and say, do we, do we have an existential crisis here in terms of the future financial ability, future financial viability of preschool? And not that it has to be a profit-making center, right? I mean, there's obviously value to preschool, we have a whole enrollment working group focusing on that. But yeah, you know, particularly with the level of services, so I guess as we look, as we look at the value of preschool, you know, which I think we all universally agree about the value of preschool, you know, to be, to understand where this is headed and to manage it in a conscious way, it feels kind of important for us.
I was going to say, you...
Yeah.
The other...
Are you sure? I was just going to point out a couple of things about our preschool, just, I think is helpful as we think about the next meeting. So, our preschool is the integrated model, so it's got somewhere around 65 kids at any point. So, somewhere around half of those kids pay tuition. If you're there for special education needs, then you're not paying tuition. The other thing to note is that our program isn't full day in the same way other preschool programs might be full day. So, I think it's six and a half hour, six-hour program. Is Joel Smith still here? How many hours is our, the Crocker Farm preschool program?
The morning program is four hours.
And then, if you have the extended day, how much is it?
That's not, that's another two hours.
Okay, so at a maximum, it would be six hours, okay. So, just in terms of comparing to other preschools in the area, this is one thing to note, is that many of them will go from, you know, seven to four, eight to four, or something like that. So, it puts us on a little bit different, just a different model.
I did want to add, too, just as compared to the preschool that currently operates at the high school, or Pelham for that matter, this is the preschool that we are mandated to service students with disabilities age three to five. So, we have an integrated model. But I just want to cut a distinction between the preschool at Crocker Farm and some other ones that are in dialogue like last night. At our regional meeting is that whether we have this current model or another model, we are both ethically and financially obligated to support that population. And historically, the district has been committed to the integrated model because of its inclusivity, and that it's not focused, that there's typical peers to support. I'm not suggesting that you're against that, but I do want to just cut the distinction for the committee, so that when we have conversations in different districts, we understand that... At our regional meeting is that whether we have this current model or another model, we are both ethically and financially obligated to support that population. And historically, the, the district has been committed to the, include, the integrated model because of its inclusivity and that it's not focused, that there's typical peers to support. I'm not suggesting that you're against that, but I, I do want to just cut the distinction for the committee so that when we have conversations in different districts, we understand that it's not just that the programs are different. Actually, they have different goals, intentions, and different legal mandates that are surrounding them.
So just to be clear, we're mandated to, to serve the needs of, of children in preschool with special needs and provide them education tuition-free, and that mandate is no longer being funded. Is that correct? It's, it's being defunded.
We're funding the mandate.
It's being defunded by the state. It's, it's an.
Yes, the inclusive preschool model grant, which we had, is a three-year phase-out, and I believe next year's the last year of that grant cycle. So I think it is an opportunity to think about the, both the financial viability, but also the program model. I think you'll hear, not to preview their work, but that about preschool more generally in the community and how many, if there are students and families who are underserved in trying to separate from disability category in attaining high-quality preschool education for their child. And, and we all know what the research says about the implications of that. So I think it'll be an interesting juxtaposition of this information and the enrollment working group presentation next time to help us think a little bit about, I mean, the only upside, if there is one, about the, and the conclusion of the grant is that it, it allows us more flexibility to think about what's the best way to program because the grant did, you know, restrict us. Frankly, we've agreed with some of the restrictions the grant had, right? I mean, and restrictions, I mean, programmatic restrictions. But I think, you know, the doors open a bit to that, and, and I think over the next year, we, we need to have some of those conversations.
Yeah. I mean, I would say, I think, you know, as a society, we need more preschool, not less preschool, right? And, and I think it's, it's absolutely our imperative to make sure that we have this kind of a preschool program in our community. And I think a lot of community members would support that as well. One thing that I was going to say is I think, you know, that, that the advantage that I see to the grant also sort of being phased out, if there is an advantage to something like that, is that perhaps we can look at other models, perhaps an after-school, or not an after-school, but an afternoon program. Because I think you just mentioned earlier that there's a morning program, and then you can extend two hours. And I actually just wanted to say something that Mr. Mangano said earlier. You know, when I was looking for preschool programs in the community, it was really difficult to find, you know, full-day preschool programs. I think the majority of them actually only run until about one o'clock in the afternoon or so. And so you end up cobbling together, you know, multiple, you know, schools or, you know, daycare with the preschool program. It becomes very difficult for working families in particular to be able to send their children to preschool because there are no, or very few full-day preschool programs. If we could provide perhaps an option like that, I think that would be incredible, right? And, and I think, you know, it sounds like there's enough of a need where a lot of parents and families would potentially even be interested in something like that. So maybe, you know, it could be split. So anyway, you know, I, I'm not going to pretend to know all the different ways that we could potentially do something like that. But I do think it provides an opportunity there for, for us to consider that. Yes, Mr. Demme?
Just a quick comment to end. I want to, want to be clear. Like, the reason I bring it up is, is because I was looking to reduce the preschool. I mean, I mean, I, I could, I could cite chapter and verse and go on forever about, about the, the social need and movement for universal preschool and the value of it. So it's, it was more on, you know, whoa, we need to make sure that we have a financially sustainable model in the future so that we can continue to have and experience service. And I mean, I hear nothing but positive things from, you know, community members and from staff about, about the services, the preschools.
Mr. Demme, we just have to put you in the hot seat sometimes. Put everybody else in the hot seat, so. All right. Any more questions, comments? Thank you so much, Mr. Mangano. So we also have capital, we have just capital discussion, okay?
Yeah. I can facilitate a little bit of that, and then I think Mr. McPherson will have some things to say as well. We're not up tomorrow. There is a JCPC, a joint capital planning meeting tomorrow. Schools aren't on there for tomorrow's meeting. The thing that was relevant that was in your, that was emailed to the committee is the report came back. So you funded, uh, you asked for funding, and excuse me, the town funded a study of the Fort River roof. And so that roof report was emailed to the committee. It came in at one point nine million dollars to replace the Fort River roof. It's not something we're going to ask the town for. I would recommend, excuse me, apologize for my language. I wouldn't recommend asking the town for that this year. I think there's a feasibility study that's happening that, that information will be useful for. Mr. McPherson, I think I missed Mr. Mangano, but Mr. McPherson did contact the folks who did that report, and they had a recommendation about fixing the problems, at least in the, for a somewhat temporary, I don't mean like one month temporary, but next couple of years. And I wondered if Mr. McPherson could maybe describe that a little bit, because that is a recommendation I'd make to the committee to then bring to joint capital planning.
Sure. So in the course of this discussion, I'm not going to tell you anything that you don't already know. The roofs are old. They've been neglected for years and years and years, and they've just worn out. So what we're basically going to do is rather than applying adhesive as we have for the past few years, we're going to put a professional crew up on the roof, actually do some patching, take care of some of the specific leaks that we're suffering now, deal with the overall conditions, and kind of project forward where we think the, the failures are going to occur. So I, I think that's a valuable investment, and it should hold us together for two, three, maybe four years. And maybe we'll do it again with a little smaller package in the future. So I think we have some advantages there.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
So just because that was a report that came in, you know, I want to share it. You know, we certainly can talk more capital items at an upcoming meeting. I think we should, just around, as the, as a closer Springtown meeting. But because that report came out, I'll be sharing that report as well with the school building committee, the Fort River feasibility committee discussion about names actually at the last meeting, so that they have access to it, even though it's not exactly germane to what they're focused on right now. I want them to have that information as well, because I thought it was a very comprehensive report, as you saw. It was, not just in terms of length, but even as a lay reader, I could actually start making sense and piecing together some of what the issues are and what the potential solutions might be.
Yes. Just a question, because the previous figure that we had seen for a Fort River roof replacement was one point two million, I believe.
That's right. Correct.
This is significantly higher.
Correct.
Is there, I mean, in your professional estimate, why would there be such a huge difference between the previous, you know, only a couple of years old?
So I don't know the origin of the original numbers. The existing ones are based on a complete tear-off of the roof, assuming limited asbestos exposure, assuming limited corrosion in the metals that support the roof. And there are flaws in the way the existing roof is configured that we would hope to correct. And I suspect some of the extra dollars are there. This would be a long-term, permanent, twenty-year fix rather than repeating the errors that we've suffered for the last few decades.
I think the other thing I noticed, and, and maybe you can fill in this gap too, is I think when the original number was gathered, I mean, I think there are structural, kind of like code requirements that have shifted on replacing roofs. And may, I don't know if you can mention one or two, but that, that when I saw the cost breakdown, that I didn't hear when that previous number was shared, but with the code changes that are all, that's not a critique of code changes. They're on safety, like, they're good things, but they're good things that have dollar signs attached to them as well.
Invariably, they do. So one aspect of it is in the original construction, and fairly recently as well, snow drifting upon the roof was not a consideration. So if you have a snow drift, then clearly you have more weight. Roof needs to be strengthened. There's dollars associated with that. In order to prevent drifting and all the rest of it that goes with it, there's an additional requirement for insulation thickness. So it's approximately three inches thicker than it would have been otherwise. Again, dollars associated with everything.
Yes.
So do we have like a ballpark on this professional patching to the four-year thing yet?
I think we were in the thirty K range.
And can you just correct me if I'm wrong? In, in my understanding of reading the report, this, that there, it was expressed that it could potentially be made solar-ready, but this doesn't, it would be a more expensive process, and this does not include.
It does not include solar.
That.
And.
Or solar-ready.
I would suggest that it's never going to be solar-ready.
That was my sense. Okay.
In any economically reasonable fashion.
Okay. Thank you.
You will find me to be very direct and.
That's, that's why I'm asking. I wanted to really be clear about that. Yeah.
I love that. Please keep that up. And thank you, thank you in advance for your, for your overview of Fort River Wildwood Buildings when we have our MSBA Statement of Interest discussion. There'll be a lot of community interest in that.
Surely.
And I, I think your professional, clear, direct style will be very appreciated.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. So school choice hearing. So what that means is that it is, my understanding that it's required by law that we have an opportunity for the community to weigh in about school choice. So, yes.
And I can maybe just, in case anyone wants to weigh in.
Yeah.
So our district for the last couple of years has been a school choice district. We currently have upwards of in the low nineties, I think ninety-two, ninety-three, school choice students across the seven grade levels, three schools. My perspective is there's a lot of benefit from the choice, the students who come to us, both in terms of financial benefit, but also many choice families that come to us come for specific reasons, diverse of our student body. And by diversity, what I hear from choice families is not, sometimes it's racial, ethnic, sometimes it's around gender identity, gender orientation of families. And I think for, it's a sort of contrast to some of what we heard earlier around declining enrollment. So I think we are more diverse than many of our surrounding communities are, and that's a draw for many families. And it's expensive to live in Amherst, right? And so I want to be cautious about, you know, what's the right balance of choice for non-choice. This is the highest we've been, about eight percent choice district at the point. At this moment, Amherst Public Schools. I don't mean the, any other districts. So we're nowhere close to Pelham. But, but it's higher than we've been. We're looking really to, we don't have many sections that we'd be looking to add choice students in next year. Our class sizes are relatively stable, and we don't see a lot of open slots in our current K to five population. Sixth grade would be going on to the middle school. But we don't know what kindergarten enrollments will be. Kindergarten tends to be, kindergarten sixth grade are when we get the most, we get the most choice applicants in kindergarten sixth grade. Kindergarten for sort of obvious reasons, starting, uh, schooling experience. Sixth grade because in many other communities, sixth grade is when elementary school ends, and folks are, many families try to get in before we get to the regional schools. It's possible in our sixth grade next year, there may be a few slots. But really what we're looking at primarily is, if this goes forward, is kindergarten and sixth grade, not so much looking at the other grade levels. We feel like we've built the level of choice to sufficient pieces, and we're really not looking to add much more than what we currently have, except for perhaps sixth grade, depending on the number of sections we have at some of the schools, and then depending on kindergarten enrollments. And so I think we're like, we're at that balance. We're not looking to add to it unless there's, those two grade levels in particular might have a little space.
Okay. Okay. So first I'm going to ask, are there any community members who'd like to weigh in about school choice? Okay. Okay. Thank you. And so, and I want to say that it, is it at our next meeting? At our next meeting, yes, we will have, that's when we'll have our school choice vote. So there will be another opportunity to weigh in about this, if you'd like. But you're also welcome to do so now.
So should we not discuss now? Do you want to discuss later? Is that what you prefer?
I'm happy to hear what you have to say.
Well, I, I just want to see if we can, for the sake of time, I have to leave a little bit before nine.
Okay.
But I, could we do it at the next, at the vote? Because then people can see our full discussions before our vote.
Sure.
Comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. So moving on. Okay. Superintendent's goals.
So they're in your packet. Sorry, it's a thick, we've had a lot of thick packets lately, haven't we? Yes, it's good. We're providing a lot of information. I got to find it in my packet, which is not the best though. Thank you. So they're going to look similar, but not the same to what you saw in the region. First one is, is pretty identical on the communication plan. The second one is similar on the budget challenges. They're, they're slightly different magnitude in Amherst. But as you saw tonight, five hundred thousand dollars is not something that, resolving that budget challenge will not come easily. It's really unfortunate about the health insurance. If not for health insurance, we'd be talking about a really stable budget or perhaps things that, you know, even more than some of the limited ads we were able to make. I do want, yeah, I think I'll leave it there. The third one, so I adjusted it somewhat based on the feedback I heard at region, and not to mix our districts, but since I was writing similar goals in the PD, it's across K to twelve. The fourth one is, we talked about this in Pelham, and I got encouraged, sorry to mix districts again. I got encouraged in Pelham to include the work that happened on the elementary homework guidelines, even though it's already sort of happened, although we will get more feedback this spring because it was a major initiative at the elementary school level and during this academic year. And the last one was spoken about tonight, which is perhaps the largest challenge on a personal level, is how to take five high-quality subgroup reports that are looking at diverse topics and really try to both understand the, the recommendations and develop a process moving forward where we can be considering potential opportunities identified by the subgroups and looking forward of what we can do in the next couple of years, right? So as I said earlier tonight, I, I don't think any of this is actionable. The large recommendations are actionable for the next fiscal year. You know, so we talk about specialized programs. Like, I'm not suggesting a change for FY nineteen for some of those programs about like whether it's centralized, decentralized. What I do think is really valuable is to have a process going forward where we can study that in more detail and, and talk to the community, including CPAC. I'm picking on special ed, but that's just because they're in my mind because they presented last. And so, you know, as I said, I'd like to come back at the March thirteenth, fifteenth, whatever. I think it's thirteenth meeting, and, and both talk about some ideas I have, because it won't be casual, like, here's what I noticed. It's, I do think we've had frankly, a year-long process. About last March was when the building project ended, and the enrollment working group was formed. And so I think we've had a tremendous twenty-eight people doing that level of work that you've seen. I'm really proud of that group and the process that would played out. And so we've had a lot of community input. And then I think it would be an opportunity for me to say, here are my thoughts on this. I'd like to explore this. Not this is what's going to happen, but I, I do think that needs to happen in March and then to play out later in the spring with further community engagement. So those are my proposed goals, much like the other districts. We'd come back and vote at a future meeting. I'm not at all looking for a vote. I'm really just looking for feedback tonight.
Just, I just wanted to note, I like that you have the first goal up there is development of the communication plan. Like, that, that's sort of front and center. And thank you for adding the homework initiative. I totally forgot how much effort and time went into that and what a good community engagement that was. And somewhat related to region, but I guess the same is this theme of teacher collaboration to come up. I remember I had asked you to consider adding that, and then I remembered that it was almost the end of January. So I'm not asking you to add a goal almost more than halfway through the year that, you know, has not been on the radar, you know, in that kind of leveled way. So if, if that's more appropriate for next year, it's more thematic and other things, that's, that's fine. I don't want to give you a false impression of completed goal starting seven months ago.
Right. And I think the thing that I'd say is, because I, I believe teacher collaboration is incredibly important, is that I think in some of the artifacts and how all of these, or many of these goals are presented, it's, it'll be part of it. Like, you know, the homework being a good example, right? So I'm not going to do that now. This is about proposing goals, not sharing what I've done towards them, but how teacher collaboration was embedded and critical in that process. So I think that's the way that, without having an explicit goal, I think it can be woven into the current ones. But I don't disagree with your points at all.
I think these are, these are great. I would agree with Mr. Demme, the communications plan is sort of foremost for all the reasons that we talked about previously. One thing that I would add for your consideration is maybe an additional goal or like a sub-goal is soliciting input from stakeholders across the district, and that includes parents and, you know, caregivers. Because I know you've talked, you and Ms. Cunningham have talked about this at the regional level, about the sort of tour that you've done with all the different schools, right? And, and I know that this past year, there has been a very strong focus on your part from, of soliciting input from various people about all sorts of different topics related to our schools. And so it feels like an important thing to formalize and to have there, and something that I think we should be frankly evaluating along because I think, you know, people are paying attention to that. And so that's a good thing.
Yeah. Thank you. That's really good, helpful feedback.
Yeah. I'm going to, um, a question. I think you, you talked about the, it was a community engagement in that there were some consultants or something, or organization. How does that fit in here?
That was a regional objective.
That was regional?
Yeah.
Okay. Not Amherst.
It was not. And that's going to kick off a little, we decided after the budget process has unfolded the way it has at the regional level, we'll kick that off after the budget process closes. the way it has at the regional level, we'll kick that off after the budget process closes.
Okay.
So that'll definitely be on there, but it was specific to seven through 12.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, thank you. I, I feel really comfortable with these goals, and I appreciate the thought specificity and that we already know a lot of what you've done towards this, is really-
Next year we'll be doing it.
Exciting. Okay, great. So sabbatical requests. So we did receive two sabbatical requests, which I had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Morris, to sort of hear his perspective and his recommendations. So people have a chance to sort of look these over, and ask Dr. Morris to speak to his recommendation on these.
Again, crossing districts, I feel somewhat analogous, although they're very different topics, about these two sabbatical requests, as I did about the one that we had at region. Incredibly worthwhile topics. I do feel, I appreciate the time and effort that staff put into writing them. When I think of the standard that we have around sabbatical, I always look for being incredibly clear about how that time will be used and the need for it, and how it's different from the work that can occur during a school year. And for both of them, while valuable, I'd be invested in, I do have a meeting set up with the, the teacher, and actually Mr. Sheehan, at the regional level to think about how to implement that. And I, for me, it's always awkward talking about this, because I really respect the staff so much, it didn't, neither of these read that bar for me, where I could, I feel like we've seen excellent sabbatical proposals that were over that bar. And so what I'd recommend is same two things. One is, I, I wouldn't recommend supporting these as sabbaticals, and I'd recommend that you encourage, or require me to meet with both of these individuals, with the relevant staff, it's slightly different, because they're different proposals, and see what can be done about supporting the professional work that's proposed within the confines of traditional school year contract.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, I, I want to just really express appreciation for the, the thought and consideration that went into preparing these proposals, and the clear desire on the part of the applicants to extend and expand their professional development, their, and what they can bring to the students and the staff in their schools. And so I, you know, we have not voted yet, but I, I would encourage Dr. Morris to work with these individuals to, to, you know, work in expanding that kind of work, and to the benefit of our, our schools and to our staff. Other comments, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, I just, you can, you can feel the educational devotion in these, in these write-ups, which is, you know, really nice to, to read, and to see that we have in our district. And it's, you know, similar, it makes me think of the teacher collaboration thing again, because it's, it's the same theme of how do we structurally leverage the knowledge and, and wisdom that we already have in-house?
Yeah.
You know, it's like, here's a math and intervention teacher who has these great ways to do things, and yet it's not accessible to all of our teachers. And so it's just a matter of creating the structure that makes that fit. And this is happening all over the district, right? Not just math and intervention and special ed administration, but, but everywhere. And so how do we, how do we facilitate that? Obviously, part of that is dollars, but there's creativity that, you know, happens there as well. And, you know, this is a flavor of that, and it's, it's never easy, I think, at the school, school committee level to deny a sabbatical. But I think, as you said, it is a high bar, and as long as we instruct, and I certainly would sincerely instruct you to meet with our teachers, and see, given, you know, budget constraints and other time constraints, what, what can be done in order to take advantage of their knowledge and experience that they obviously are so willing to and wanting to share with their colleagues.
So I know this is difficult, but if anyone is willing to, for the motion, on this front.
I move to, do they have to be done individually?
Can we do it as a, as a team?
No, I don't, I don't think that's to be done individually.
I move to not approve the sabbatical submitted by Ann Kornblatt.
We, we can do both? We can do both at once? Here, go ahead and do so.
And by Alvaro Burrell.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Can we go to the discussion? I'll go in favor. Oh, sorry, for this discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to also, you know, sort of reinforce what I've heard. I think, I was, I was impressed with the dedication and vision that was expressed in these sabbatical requests. And also agree that I think looking for maybe, you know, more creative ways of bringing in some of the desired expertise or experience into our, our schools would probably benefit, you know, both these individuals and also their students a little bit more than the proposed sabbaticals. But I do look forward to hearing more from them, hopefully at some point in the future, and getting a better sense of the kind of work that they're doing, so.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. Let's get in this. Okay. And next, we do have some gifts. So I will take a motion.
I move to accept gifts from donor Hallmark Global Services LLC to support Fort River 2017 Crayola education winner, the amount of $2,500. Fort River Parent Council to support Fort River art donation, $100. Patricia Shum to support Family Center donation, $50. James Quoc to support Elementary Music Department. A Stammel half-sized cello and bow block bag, estimated value at $1,940. For the total amount in gifts of $4,590.
Great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes?
I just want to note, sometimes I try to do this when it's our staff, speaking of that same theme we just talked about. So Patricia Shum is a school psychologist at Fort River School. So it's not to not appreciate the other donations, but I do want to, anytime it's a staff member or former staff member, I try to note that, and it's greatly appreciated by the Family Center.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor? Great. Thank you very much. Okay. So school committee planning. So if you look at the agenda that was separate, I did, Dr. Morris and I did try to get a list up here, so that we could have these in front of us as we discussed at previous meetings, meeting, at least at the other level. Oh, there was a separate agenda printed out that should have been passed out, everybody?
I don't think I have that.
It was with other papers that were on the table when you-
I have to go.
Oh, you know, user error.
No.
Turn it off and on.
So coming up, we have the, two more EWG presentations, safety presentation regarding school buildings as election polling sites, the superintendent's report on school visits, which may be not this next one, but you're thinking-
Why don't you read the list?
Okay.
Because after this meeting, I have some thoughts. I'm sorry to-
No, it's okay. I'm sorry to jump in. Okay. The budget hearing, school choice hearing, vote, second quarter budget update, that's what we have on the list. I also noted down which the presentation, the capital, or the presentation about the Fort River and Wildwood in relation to prioritizing for an SOI. And that's, you know, and then from there, possible steps in EWG around, you know, the EWG presentations, which will be in March. I also just made notes about, you know, talking about open enrollment, talking about preschool models, these are things that we brought up tonight, I'm not sure, but I just want to float them, because they're also there. Any, any thoughts that people have? Yeah.
So if I could just offer my thoughts.
Yeah.
So I think for February 5th, the two enrollment working group presentations, for sure.
Yep.
The police did today, complete a report around the safety of the polling sites, they're a little quicker than we thought, which is wonderful, so I'd like to have that on in February 5th, because I think the, the more we can have that before the March election, because that would, my instinct is that'll end up kicking back to select board as well, so I think that one's a little time-sensitive.
Yep.
And I think second quarter budget update's going to be really critical, given the current fiscal situation. I actually think that's a manageable, chunked, manably, reasonably chunked meeting. And then we get to the, February 27th would be the next meeting, which would be the budget The school choice vote, I think we could certainly move on it on that same night before. There may be, I'm currently working, given the, because I've, again, I get all the enrollment working group stuff a little before the committee does, because it was originally set up that way. I think there may be an external report that I likely want to have come in on the 27th, just to follow up on some of what you're going to hear on the 5th. And it's going to be a pretty lengthy one. So I actually think if we can push off the school visits one until the March meeting, because I think it'll, it'll actually be relevant to the enrollment work, taking the enrollment working group, and then having the staff voice in that, certainly more staff members in the enrollment working group, but I think it's actually a nice dovetail, is if it's okay to wait till March. I know it extends the gap between when I heard it, when Ms. Cunningham and I heard it, but I just think, like, it would just make sense that way. And then the other one-
The SOI, Mr. McPherson?
Yeah, the SOI would be also on the 27th.
2/27, right.
Yeah, and that'll be, that'll be a lengthy meeting. But I think it's just going to be the way it has to be, and I think when we get down to it, I can work with Ms. Hazard and the committee about whether it actually behooves us to start earlier than, like, if that's possible for people, that one in particular to start earlier than six, because I think there'll be a lot of topics of interest on that one.
Yeah.
The SOI one will be, I mean, there's just a lot there. But that's, that's sort of how I was thinking of chunking it out, so.
Okay. And then we're looking at, you know, sort of your considerations around where to go with EWG presentations on the 13th.
Yeah, and I could integrate the, some of what I heard from staff there, that'll also be the budget vote.
Yep. Okay.
And I actually think that's probably enough. I mean, not that I want to exclude other topics at all, but just both of those are going to take a while.
Yep.
There was an item, Dr. Morris, we talked about months ago, and I honestly don't remember where it stood.
Sure.
About, this was talking to Fort River and Wildwood staff, I think it was somewhat right after the building project, about short-term improvements to the building-
Right.
Just ideas that may or may not be capital-related. And then coming back and just seeing what that was, I don't know if that makes sense to fold into one of, either the report out on school visits, or the SOI, or whether you already did, and I forgot about it.
No, no, no. You did not. I think when we talked to Mr. McPherson, I mean, I think he can integrate, I mean, I will be sharing with him what staff told me, and I think as he's analyzing the schools, using his professional expertise, that's how I was seeing that woven in.
Great.
But I didn't say that explicitly, you did miss it, and I apologize about that.
And I just, my, my memory is that this was actually anticipated, that we wouldn't really have that discussion until we had somebody in place-
Until facilities, right.
-who could really give us an expert opinion, so thank you for jogging the memory, but I think we actually are on schedule for what we originally said.
No, you're, I, I didn't make that explicit, so I apologize.